Good evening and welcome everyone to the March 28, 2022, meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation only, and I'll give you a few points about that in just a moment. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. I do need to ask if anyone else is recording the meeting. It is all right to record the meeting, but you need to notify us. I'll give you a few seconds in case you're muted. So regarding our remote participation, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation only in accordance with Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and shall afford adequate alternative means of public access via Microsoft Teams or by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. That's 1-508-945-4410. And the conference ID number is 580-619-638-Pound. That's 580-619-638-Pound. And you can also, as I mentioned, join the meeting online using Microsoft Teams through the link that is in the agenda that's posted on the town website. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible, as I mentioned. And in accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the Chair. A few additional points about our remote participation procedures. We'll start with a roll call of all board members. When, if you are a non-board member, a member of the public, and you're recognized by the Chair to speak, please repeat the last four digits of your phone number as well as your name so that we can clearly identify all speakers on the call. And as such, after an agenda item has been discussed by the Planning Board, I will ask for questions or comments from the public, and when recognized by the Chair, you may speak. As an additional point, I should have mentioned that if you are not speaking, would you kindly mute your microphones either on your telephone or on the computer? And with the exception of Planning Board members, would everyone please disable their video if you are not speaking? All votes that the Planning Board takes tonight will be taken by roll call, and at the end of the meeting, we'll note the meeting, we'll note the adjournment with a verbal confirmation, and we'll note the time of adjournment. So let's start with the roll call of board members. Bob Dubis will not be with, joining us tonight. Art Spru, are you present?
Art Spru, present.
Thank you. Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
Bob Wertschafter.
Bob Wertschafter, present.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, present.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, present.
Thank you. And this is Catherine Halpern, also present. So we'll start with the first agenda item, and that's our minutes. We have the minutes from March 7 meeting and March 14. Why don't we do them separately? So first, the minutes for the March 7 meeting. Does anyone have any comments or additions or corrections? No?
Catherine, this is Art.
Yeah?
I just noticed on both of them, there was no time of adjournment of the meeting. Is it normally noted?
Okay. Let's see, it says 7:42 PM for the March 7 meeting. So in that last paragraph, it does include the time of adjournment.
Oh, there it is. I missed that. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right. It's right at the end. Any other corrections, additions? So could I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 7 meeting?
Warren Chain, so moved.
And a second motion to the motion, please.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. So Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approved.
Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
Catherine Halpern, I also approve. So let's take a look at the minutes for March 14. Any corrections, additions? And I just see the time of adjournment is noted at the end, Arthur. So could I have a motion to approve the March 14 minutes?
Art Spru will make that motion.
Thank you. And could I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right. We'll take Roger's second, if that's okay, Warren. So let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approved.
Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve the minutes for the 14th. Next item on our agenda is the release of covenant bond statement of conditions, and this is for 279 Crowell Road, and they've requested a release of covenant. This is, this matter has been continued from our March 14 meeting. However, as I understand from Ally's notes, and I'll just verify again with Ally if anything came in at the last minute, we have requested additional information from this applicant, and we have not yet received it. Is that still the case?
That is correct, Catherine. We have not received any additional information regarding this request.
All right. So I will suggest that we continue this matter until we do receive the information that we've requested from this applicant. Ally and I were thinking to give them a little more time, and rather than continue it to April 11, continue it to April 25th, if the board agrees with that. Since they've, we've continued it, we, meeting to meeting, and so far, they haven't provided what we've requested, so we thought to give them a little more time. If the board agrees with that, could I have a motion to continue this matter to April 25?
Catherine, I think Warren has his hand up.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Warren. I didn't see. Yes, go ahead, Warren.
Madam Chairman, I thought this would probably be continued, but I did stop by to take a look right after our most recent rainstorm.
All right.
The work from the last time we reviewed this matter has been done.
Okay.
And it's significantly improved the matter, but at the same time, there's still a significant amount of overwash, which is running over the drain and the berm which was created. And it does seem to me that some additional work is needed in order to keep the rainwater off of Dr. Cole's property. I just thought I'd make sure that's in the record so that somebody could hear that it does seem to require some additional work, even though additional work's been done already.
Thank you.
But I'm moved for the continuance as you proposed.
Okay, thank you, Warren. So you're making the motion, and do I have a second?
Tom Gagin, second.
Thank you. So we'll do the roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approved.
Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve that we continue this matter to April 25. All right. So the next item on our agenda is a formal site plan review for 160 Millhill Road, and this is a Town of Chatham project, proposed construction of a water treatment facility. And I'm just going to ask if we have someone to present this project for us, rather than reviewing the notes right away. Yes, are you with, please introduce yourself. Are you, we have Lea Stanton from Weston and Sampson, is that correct?
That's correct. Yep. I don't know if Tom Temple is on. I know Tom Barr is on with the Water Superintendent, but I'm happy to introduce the project.
Yes, if you could go ahead, that would be great. And if Tom Temple's connected, we can also have him speak. Please go ahead.
I'm sorry, Catherine, this is Ally. Just before we go ahead, I spoke with Tom Temple just before this meeting. He is not able to attend tonight because he does have another meeting scheduled at the same time, but he did want to pass on to the board that he is in full favor of this project on behalf of the town.
Great. Thank you. That's good to know. So please go ahead, Ms. Danton.
Okay. So this, I'm here to talk about wells 10 and 11, which were started back in 2005 or era. The wells were drilled, and then we did sampling, and we found MTBE in the wells, and the project was put on hold indefinitely. So in, starting up in 2019, we went back out to these wells and sampled them for all of the contaminants that we had found in 2005, and found everything, all of those MTBE to be non-detect. So we are moving forward this, with this project. What you're looking at here is the site plan for the wells, which are at the ends of this kind of crooked Y, which they're 36-inch municipal drinking water wells. They will pump through water main, and then combine and head into this building, what you see on this site, which I believe is 60 by 40, I want to say. And I have with me James Pearson on the call as well. But so inside of this building will be a chemical treatment system. So we will treat the water for, with chlorine, phosphate, which is a corrosion inhibitor, and also potassium hydroxide, which is used for pH adjustment. That's the, this is the interior layout of the room. Okay, so wells 10 and 11 come in through this Y. They're combined through. They're treated with the chemicals that I noted, and then they go out to the distribution system.
All right.
I, we, there is an area behind the building that you can see, which is the larger rectangle. It is a gravel, it will be a gravel area, but it will house future filtration if it's needed. I don't know, I don't know if you are aware, we are designing a new treatment plant over on Training Field Wells for those, Training Field Road for those wells five and eight out there. So, which will handle iron manganese and PFAS. And this, this area is for future, not needed now, because of the levels of what we see in the water, but it would be here potentially for future.
This facility is for future.
The larger.
It's, it's not, it's not, sorry, sorry, Leah.
The larger rectangle would house a potential future filtration building.
All right. Did you want to add something, Mr. Fleming?
Yes, that, that's just site. They're going to grade and level that. It's not an actual area where a building will be made, but they just, they're going to go ahead and do the civil site improvements so that something in the future could potentially be constructed there, so that it's level and, and matches the grade with the existing or the current construction activities.
All right.
I apologize. I'm also with Weston and Sampson. I'm, I'm Leah's a technical engineer.
All right. So, so you're planning to prepare the site now, but you're not actually planning to construct the building. Did I understand that correctly?
The areas that are, the areas that are shown in, that are not hashed, the, the building is about 1,600 square feet, Leah? Yes?
I don't remember the dimensions. It's on that.
Our notes, our notes say 40 foot by 60 foot?
2,400. Yeah, 20, 24, that would be 2,400 square feet. Yes. Yep.
Okay. All right. And I guess, based on what you said, forgive me, but I just want to be sure I've understood you correctly. You're saying you're doing the site preparation now, but not proceeding with the construction of the building. Is that correct or incorrect?
That is incorrect.
Incorrect. All right.
So this is James Pearson with Weston and Sampson. I'm with Leah and Ryan, and I'd be happy to walk you through some of this, the site elements to tell you what we are and are not constructing, if you wish.
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Pearson.
Yeah, so I'll just walk you through, starting from the, the right side of the page. Millhill Road, that's where we're connecting with an access road to come into the site. We're proposing to do a little paved apron there, coming right off of the road. And then there's going to be several hundred feet of gravel road, and there's kind of a gate, maybe about a third of the way in. It's going to be gravel road coming up to the building site. And if we wouldn't mind zooming in on the building site. Here we go. All right. So what, what you'll see here is, you'll see the gravel area as it's, the gravel road as it's coming towards the building, it widens out. So we have a widened out area where there's additional gravel, and that's for parking for, for operators who might be coming to use the facility. We would expect there'd be maybe only like, you know, one, one vehicle there, maybe for a half an hour to an hour a day at, at the most. But this area here, you know, we could accommodate up to five vehicles if necessary within this area, which, you know, may, maybe you'd have more than one vehicle if there was some kind of special maintenance work that needed to be done. But aside from that, the day-to-day parking is just going to be one vehicle, and like I said, only for a half hour to an hour a day. So then you'll see, there's a rectangle there on the plan that's, it's labeled 67.4 on one side and 40.3 on the other, and it's labeled proposed treatment building. So that's the building that we're constructing. Okay? That's going to be constructed as part of this application. So that's what we're seeking approval for. And you might have seen earlier on some other sheets, we don't have to flip to them now, but on the other sheets, you might have seen earlier that we flipped past quickly, there were some elevations showing what the outside of the building will look like. We can go back to those in a minute. But for now, you'll also see there's a larger rectangle towards the back of the building that says proposed gravel pad for potential future filtration building. So, so that's an area where they're just going to flatten out an area, place some gravel, and just have it ready, quite frankly, for any future building construction that may occur. So, so all we're asking for with this application is just approval for just a flattened gravel area behind the building in that location. We're not, you know, later on, if there's going to be a new building back there, obviously, we have to come back to you guys and, and talk to you about that. So going back to the smaller rectangle that is the proposed building that we're going to do, you'll see next to it, there's some gray shaded area that's kind of shaped like a letter Y. That is paved area. That's the only pavement on, on this whole site besides the little apron that was by the street. This is an area where trucks are going to be able to pull in next to the building for chemical delivery. They're going to be able to pull farther into one leg of the Y, and then back up into the other leg of the Y, and then pull back out, doing sort of like a three-point turn in order for the trucks to be able to get back out. So on the legs of that Y, you'll also see some little, you know, serpentine gravel roads coming off of there that lead to the two wells. So that, that's, you know, those are wells 10 and 11. Now, just to the lower side of where that, that shaded gray Y is, you'll see there's a bunch of stuff down there. What that is, is there's a generator we're going to put there. It's going to be a propane-fired generator. We'll have two propane tanks next to it. There are two 2,000 gallon propane tanks to feed propane to the generator. Then we also have an electrical transformer that's going to be right out there. And so those, those things are going to be there to, you know, the transformer for regular day-to-day power for the facility. And then if the power goes out, that's when the generator and the propane tanks come into play. The wells that are, the wells themselves, 10, 11, that are down, those little roads, those are going to be fenced in. We're proposing some paint link fencing around those just to, to keep them secure. And, you know, we're really just trying to minimize site disturbance as well. You can kind of see, we have sort of a dashed outline that's our limit of our site disturbance that kind of surrounds the whole project. So that's kind of what we're proposing in a nutshell. So I'd be happy to answer any further questions you might have.
Great. Thank you so much. Why don't we go through the board and see if there's questions? And again, just as Ally mentioned, Tom Temple has reviewed this and given his approval. But Art, do you have comments or questions for any of the people from Weston and Sampson? Or Mr. Pearson, or Mr. Fleming, or Lea Stanton?
Yes, I have a few, few questions. The, the access drive, again, it's a, it's a long access drive. It's got some steep slopes in it, 9 and 10%. I assume that you're going to have, need access to this treatment facility all year long, including in the winter months. Is, is that, you know, for checking on things, inspections and maintenance that occur, that might occur even during the winter months? Is that true?
That is true.
Yeah. With those type of grades in that, are you proposing to do any type of special de-icing treatment to these, to this access drive? Because that, that presents some challenges associated with, you know, a well site.
So all of the access roads to all the rest of the wells are gravel. So it is, it's a, this is what we would typically do to all the other, similar to all the other well sites. So I do not believe we would be using de-icing.
Okay, all right. The, the, the site has some impervious pavements, and it's got impervious building that has some runoff going on to that. I don't see much of some stormwater management that is meeting some of the DEP criteria. Is, is there something else that you're going to be doing, pursuing on some pre-treatment, or some other types of measures than what you show?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So this, this sheet doesn't show it, but on another sheet, we have our drainage measures shown. And what we're proposing to do is a similar practice that we've utilized in the past, that's been recommended to us by, by Mr. Bob Dunkinson. And that has involved, on the backside of the building, placing a gravel strip, because the, the roof will have no gutters. So the runoff on, on the backside of the building will, will drip into the gravel infiltration trench. And of course, the soil is very sandy, so it'll readily accept that runoff, and it won't go any further. And then adjacent to the paved roadway area, we're proposing some additional stone infiltration trenches that'll be along the edge of the pavement, so that any runoff will sheet flow off of the pavement into those stone infiltration trenches, where, again, due to the permeability of the soil, it'll, it'll be readily accepted. And the other thing about this particular site, you know, it's, it's extremely low volume. So this isn't the type of impervious area where you're going to see a lot of pollutants generated because you don't have, you know, regular traffic driving through this thing. You know, you're going to get chemical delivery trucks. They're going to show up maybe once a month. Okay? And then you're going to get, like I said, the operator who's just going to park in the gravel area for about a half an hour a day.
Yeah. Again, you, you have to file with the DEP for this, so I'm assuming that you're going to have to demonstrate how you're. Again, you you have to file with the D E P for this, so I'm assuming that you're going to have to demonstrate how you're meeting, you know, the. The state's D E P standards associated with this, that that trench of three feet wide and six inches deep is not. What they would refer to as a best management practice type trench. It certainly can't carry any of the volume, you know, and you can't infiltrate fast enough. With that shallow of of depth with the type of material that you're using. So. I think you need to provide a little bit more supporting documentation to support what you're doing here. And showing how you're meeting, you know, the state's standards in particular, uh, standard six, which is applicable for. A public wa- a well supply area.
Yeah, understood. And, um, again, it's it's an issue that we kind of took up with with Bob Dunkinson. This this is not a. This is not a, this is not a site that's subject to the Wetlands Protection Act because we're outside of all buffer zones for wetlands. So so we will not in fact be submitting an N O Y or an R D A. But we have, we have still consulted with, uh. The the towns officials as it relates to stormwater and conservation issues, and and this was the, uh, this was the approach that. That was recommended to us and and that, uh, as I said, Mr. Dunkinson seemed comfortable with.
Yeah, but you still have to file with the planning board and you have to meet our regulations too. So.
Understood.
Yeah. So I I think you need to put some supportive documentation together. This is nothing less than what we asked for. On other sites that submit associated with impervious pavements that are created that weren't there before. So. And the other, the other thing I noticed is you would have some embankments in here. Which are fairly steep going off the edge, uh, much more than a three horizontal with one vertical. You know, usually, you know, like. State highway standards calls if you're going to have something as steep as as that, in some cases, it's two to one. You should have some protective, uh, guardrail through there in case, again, during slippery weather and whatnot. Once they start going down that slope, they're not going to stop. You might want to revisit that. There's some on along. Between station five and seven that I noticed on in main entrance drive, and there's some else on, I think, well, number eleven. That's the upper one, the more northern one. I noticed, uh, we may want to take a look at from site safety perspective.
You mean for vehicle travel? So so these are, these are not, the the these, you mean for vehicle travel safety?
Yeah.
So.
You don't have a shoulder at all in.
The these, uh, these roads are, these are not for vehicle travel. These are are infrequently, um, accessed roads. That are going to be, uh. Once per month or once per quarter. So these would be. In fact, the deliveries would be delayed in the event of like inclement weather, for example. There would no, there there would not be a a a vehicle that would travel on these roads. They would delay or they would. Prevent or or or, uh, what do you call it? The. They 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 would reschedule deliveries. So so these, these are not, uh, vehicle travel roads.
I'm not suggesting they are, but they're an access drive that has a significant slope off the edge of them. And that, right, they both go toward, like, one goes to the little pond. I know it's not not significant water element, but it's still there. You have some ser- some serious grades there. I I think you should go back and take a look at it. It's what I'm suggesting that you do for safety purpose perspectives. That's what we do as a planning board, is we take a look at safety related issues.
Fair enough, you know, and I mean, in all honesty, you know, the the these roads have been designed and and they've been, uh, proposed. In a way that's consistent with sort of a, uh. Sort of a rule standard or.
It's not a road, James. James, this is not a road. We shouldn't, we shouldn't, we we let's, let's be, let's be clear on what we refer to it. It it, um, the access drive. I I don't want to refer to it as a road because it it will, it it's not a, I mean, this should not be something that that receives any vehicle traffic, maybe. Once or twice a a month, maybe, you know, it should not, it's not a road.
If you take a look at your grades, your ten percent grades going between. Elevation, um, station five and seven, that's right where that slope is. That means when a vehicle comes down there, if it hits anything, boom, it is not stopping. I'm suggesting that you take a look at it from the safety point of anybody that's driving up in that road, whether it's a delivery truck or their hometown personnel. This, this looks like it's it's a safety related issue when you take a look at the horizontal. And the vertical together associated with this, especially the grades that you're talking about there. If this was a flat area, I I could. I could certainly, uh, think of it that way as you're prescribing. But that area that I'm referring to, that has that huge embankment there that you're putting in, that has a ten percent grade.
No, I understand that. I just didn't want to refer to this, uh, in the in the dialogue of. Uh, the the town as a road. I don't want this to be referred. This is not a road.
I'm not referring to it as a road, but it's.
Yeah. No, I just wanted to correct James. I just didn't want to to go into into the record. When James referred to it as a road. It it is not a road. I I didn't want James to refer to this as a road. It it is an access drive.
And if if you take a look at. Again, the same thing from a, from a, a stormwater intensity perspective. When you have that ten percent grade coming down there, the low point is at station five. Your grade of your gravel road is all pitched toward Little Pond. There's nothing to prevent any type of, uh, excessive runoff that occurs on on roads and even gravel roads like this from continuing. To go down to the little pond area. You have nothing to actually intercept it or deal with it. You know, um, if you, uh. And and even some of the treatment, pre-treatment that I'm talking about, it could be a bio retention. That deals with a lot of different things that that could deal with pre-treatment as well as, uh, you know, the volumes that you have in infiltration. I I don't see, I, if you take a look at the B M Ps that are in the D E P handbook, you won't see a trench like you show here. You show very, they show a very different, uh, soil trench like that. So I I think you have to come back with some information associated with that. If you could. Take a look also, you have. A about a thousand feet of underground electrical conduit. From the pole all the way to your transformer, and you have no vaults or handholds or anything on there. I think you're going to need some structures in there. Of course, that's an ever source related thing. I've done work with them for thirty years, and I don't know them pulling a line that's thousand feet long with some sort of an intermediate. And again, the whole reason for this is where are you going to put it? If you put it at the bottom. At station five, that's going to be the lowest elevation. That's probably the worst thing. You should just plan for it. And that's why I'm suggesting that you actually. Do a check in with them, get information on where that should be, and then provide that on a plan so that we know that. Uh, where that's going to be when you actually install it.
Okay, and and we do have that addressed. It's on our electrical plans, which were not submitted as part of this application because we we didn't understand that level of detail as being within the scope of of the planning board review.
All you tell, all you underground utilities are part of what you should be submitting for work. Especially if you're going to excavate the ground, or you're going to put a vault in or anything like that. That that's all part of your site application that comes to, uh, to our board for review.
Okay, I should mention they're just very small handfuls that were proposed that would be along that conduit run so that they'd be pretty inconsequential as far as size and impact. So it's really the transformer vault that we showed on this one because that's large and that obviously has more impact.
Yeah. And 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 that's fine, but those are, those are dictated by ever source because that line from the pole to. The transformer is under their jurisdiction, not not in the town's. So. You have to define their criteria and meet their criteria. Uh, that's been my experience. And I think you should just provide us the information of what it is that you're doing. I I think the, the only other thing is, is there's, uh, again, a whole. Series of things that I'm bringing up here associated with this. I think it's incumbent on you as the engineers working on behalf of the town that. You define all of these regulations that you should be. Adhering to admitting, and then. Whatever appropriate measures that need to be addressed on this or how you're addressing them, I think you should. Actually come back and and tell us what those are that you're doing and how you're accomplishing it. Art, uh, what are you doing to address, you know, standard six associated with this with the D E P regulations? And how are you complying with that? That's that's important. Again, because this is a public water supply well, it's different than a average site. There's certain other criteria that you have to meet and I'm, you know, I certainly don't have all the details on that's. That's your job as the engineer to actually assess all of those, but I think it would be helpful to our board. Is if you go down through all of that criteria and define how you are meeting it and bring that information back to our board so we. We understand that you are complying with that, with those criteria and how you're going about doing that.
Say again, say again, say again, what what the, uh, priority is there? Uh, and and all I mean respectfully is that right now, what we're trying to do is maintain or 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 provide redundancy. And make like to maintain adequacy of supply for water, for potable water to the town. So we're competing, we're competing right now. Hold on. We're competing, um, to to be sure that we're designing things that are compliant with, uh, the town guidelines, obviously. We want to do that. But we also want to be sure that we're doing things so rapidly that we're able to redo, like, provide redundant supply to the town. So wh- what exactly, and I'm asking this honestly, so that you know, or or you can provide to us, what is it specifically that you want us to do so that we can do that what rapidly? So that we can be, um, responsive to your request.
I I I just got through saying that and I'll repeat it for you. Okay? You, uh, there are certain other stormwater regulations through the E P. That you are not addressing, and it's your role as engineers hired by our town. To actually go through that criteria. And state how you are addressing it and complying with it. What are you doing for treat, pre-treatment? What are you doing associated with your stormwater calculations to support that you are dealing with it sufficiently with? The devices that you have there. I don't see how that is being accomplished because I have no calculations in front of me. You have over seven thousand square feet of impervious area that you're creating here. That that wasn't there before. That's not insignificant. So. It's items like that that is your responsibility as an engineer of record to be providing this. And I'm asking, rather than us to do the research on all of this. To have you actually provide that. You're going to have to do that when you're. Probably, since this is over one acre of disturbed area, you're probably going to have to submit a N F T's general construction permit, and you're going to have to go through some issues associated with this anyway. So it it, I'm asking for you to actually go through that. You have to do that anyway when you're submitting this to the state. And provide that information to us so we understand that you are in compliance to whatever the regulation criteria is, whether it's ours or the state's.
I see. Thank you.
The, um, the other thing that I'm not sure of, and then, and again, I want to put this out to you. I know that when you have a. Metal roof or a, well, if you have a membrane roof. That does require any pre, any, any pre-treatment. But you're proposing asphalt shingles roofs associated with this. And again, does that? Does that call for any pre-treatment because, again, of the particular circumstances that you're within? A public water supply, you know, uh, you know, zone one and zone two. Just if you could provide information to say whether you do or don't have to comply with any type of pre-treatment. Device associated with that.
Understood.
And I. I think. I think that sort of gives you a, uh, a handle of what I'm looking at associated with this. And and again, this is for the benefit of the town and for the people who are going to be. Using the water associated with this well. This is, I'm only asking for stuff that the state asks for you to do as an engineer of record. There's nothing that I'm asking for that isn't here. I'm not looking for to do anything more onerous than necessary. But there's such unlimited information of what you provided associated with this, you can't make a determination on it.
For the record, I don't, I don't necessarily, I'm not going to stipulate that that's true. We will comply with the the state requirements. And and for the record, I won't, I won't stipulate that that what you just stated is is on on the record as true. I think that we will comply with the state requirements.
Okay, then I think you need to submit some information to us to demonstrate how you're doing.
And we will.
Okay.
Okay.
Catherine, that's all I have for right now.
Okay, great. Thanks, Arthur. And Mr. Fleming, I'm, this is Catherine. I'm just going to check in with you. Do you think you have? Uh, clarity on what Mr. Spru has requested? We can also send you a summary, um, after the meeting, uh, in writing if you'd like.
We'd appreciate the summary, and we will also comply with all of the state requirements for sure. And and Mr. Pearson, go ahead. Uh, I I trust that that James has done, uh, several jobs in in the state of Massachusetts. Go ahead, James.
No, that that's quite all right. I'm quite familiar with Art, with what Art's referring to, and, uh, we're more than happy to provide. Some of that information and and certainly a summary, uh, would be great. You know, just just provide additional clarity.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, James. Thank you.
So Arthur and Ally and I can send you a summary after the meeting. Of of these requests and anything else that comes up from the board members. So, thank you. So how about, let's go to Bob Wirtschaft. Did you have? Questions or comments, discussion?
Yeah, my my, uh, questions are, um, in regard to the chemicals that are being stored in that building and, um, are there? Any, uh, safety issues or, uh, storage, uh, requirements for for, uh, storing that and and moving it around?
Brian, do you want to?
Yeah, yeah. No, that's a great question. So, yes, uh, uh, James, do you have all the drawings up? Are you sharing right now, or do you just have your civil drawings?
Uh, the planning board's sharing right now, so if we need to flip to another sheet, uh, you can request that and they'll do so.
Sure. Uh, what do you mean? Okay, uh, thanks.
Hi, I'm, this is Ally. I'm sharing my screen. If you tell me which, um, page you'd like to discuss, I would be more than happy to change it to a page.
Could you go to the M, um, series drawings? Thanks. Nor normally I'm driving this whole thing.
If you do also.
Probably page nine. Yeah, we don't like these ones.
Is this the one? It's still C, I believe.
Keep, keep going. Yeah, keep going. The chemi, oh, these are all architectural. Ah, great chem, great question. All right. So it's going to be.
Yeah, Ryan, I don't think there's any M series sheets in here because they they weren't really, um. Pertinence to, uh, the planning board review o- other than. Maybe illustrating a point that I'm sure you'd like to make at this point.
Well, sure. No, I'm glad, I'm glad to make that point. I'm glad that I joined the call. Um, hold on one second. Uh, if everybody would. I'll I'll listen to or or I'll describe the chemicals. So the the most important chemical right now that we're going to be adding is, uh. The disinfectant, which is, um, chlorine. So, uh, chlorine is the, uh, it's an oxidant, obviously. So we're going to be storing that in quantities. That are below the hazard limit. Um, and I'm pulling up right now. The the files. So chlorine, uh, is obviously the disinfectant. We're going to be injecting it and, um. Achieving, uh, what's known as forelogue rebo- removal of Jardir viruses. So that's, uh. An advantage to, um, uh, towns, townspeople. In that you've got, um. A barrier to disinfection or to to, um. Obviously to, uh, hold on, chat them. Here we go. Sorry, guys. And, um, now that I've bought myself two seconds of time. Wells five and eleven.
Hi, and you could just have Ally share the architectural layouts.
Uh, yeah, that would work too. Sorry about that. And I I like to walk through my. Thank you, Ally. Sorry.
Yep, let me go down to it. If you want as well, I can stop sharing my screen and you can share yours if that's easier for you.
Is it okay? Can I share my screen now?
Yeah, of course. Let me stop.
I'm so sorry. Thank you.
No, don't apologize.
So I'm going to do it. I'm going to. I'm going to share content. Content only. All right, I'll just share my screen. Here we go. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Awesome. So here. Awesome. So here, here's the, all right, great. So, so you can see the electrical room. So this is the building that you saw just a second ago. Here you go. It's laid out this way. You can see the orientation. That's actually the wrong orientation. But we have a zinc pyrophosphate at the very end of the treatment. So I'm going to work my way backwards. This is what's used for corrosion control. At the beginning, you've got two wells that come in. So the first well will come in here, well 11 will come in here. They both come in through a Y. This allows people to do work, but also meter each well on its, on its own. You can blow the wells off through the wall here, meaning that you can, you can stop. You can bring the wells into the building and blow the wells off and run them to waste, so to speak. But you can combine the wells. Here is where you're going to inject the chemicals, which the chemicals are KOH. They're in their separate containment areas. So this is a KOH containment area. It's five foot diameter, 1,150 gallons. It's five, eight feet, six inches tall. And here is where it injects into the, the pipe. Same thing here. This is the hypochlorite. This is the disinfectant. So this raises the pH. This is disinfects the well. And this is the pyrophosphate. This is the corrosion inhibitor. Does that answer the question?
Bob, this is Catherine. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I had to get off mute. Yes, well, it, it tells me where they are. It doesn't tell me if there's any hazardous nature to them or issues with fire or, or flood in, in the building.
So, so none of these are fire, none of these are combustible. So all of these, so, so this is a, a full wall. This is a full wall. So these are contained or separated. This is in the quote unquote treatment room, meaning these are half walls. These walls are only 12 inch. They're steppable. This is a full wall. It's a firewall, meaning it's separated from the rest of the room. There is, this, this is a non-combustible fluid, meaning it does not, you could light a match over it. It will not combust. You could throw a match on top of it. Same thing with this. In fact, what happens is that these are actually responsive to water. They create and, and generate heat when water is introduced, when large quantities of water are introduced. So this is a non-fire suppressive or sprinkled room, meaning we've created separated areas or control areas to prevent the areas that are prone to fire, meaning the areas that have mechanical or electrical, they are separated by, I think, two hour rated firewalls.
Ryan, Tom Barr has his hand up.
Hi, Tom.
Mr. Barr, would you, is Tom Barr also with Weston and Sampson?
Yes, how you doing? So I'm Tom Barr. I'm with Weston and Sampson, but I'm with the service department. I'm with the chat on water and sewer. So these chemicals that Ryan is talking about are the same chemicals that we have in all of our wells. So the safety hazards, we're very familiar with. We have MSDSs, which are safety data sheets. So all of our operators know how to handle this. The fire department knows how to handle all these chemicals in case there was any kind of a spill. And we, and every year we do an annual tier two reporting, which we report to the state, exactly the amount of chemicals that we have at each facility, how we would handle a spill. What we also have for redundancy is we have alarms that go through our SCADA system, which is our alarm call out system, which calls our operators to let us know if there's any issues. If there's, if one of the chemicals was overdosing, like adding too much, we would get an alarm for a high pH or a high chlorine residual, the well shut down as part of this system. So it no longer pumps that material or chemical into the well. So there's plenty of different safety protocols that we have in place at all of our other facilities. This facility would have the exact same protocols that we meet with the state's requirements for this. So I hope that answers some of the, the safety concerns as far as the chemicals and how we handle them. Is that, does that help at all?
Thank you. Yes, it does.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
That's all you have? Mr. Barr, Mr. Fleming, this is Catherine. I, it, could we see your, the drawing again? I just had a little, a brief follow-up question to Mr. Wirtschaft's questions.
Look, look, Tom, do you want to do it or do you want, I'll, I'll do it. Yep.
I just want to understand how it works again, just to understand the safety. And forgive me if.
Oh, go ahead.
So you've got the two areas where you keep the two chemicals, chlorine and the KOH. So are those like a big vat or are they in, are they tubs in the, in a room or how is it stored? And what are the materials that line them?
Great question. So, so this is the two points of ingressing ingress. So if you walked into the room here, first of all, there's a, and this is where you would walk in. This is where there's a coiling door if you ever have to get big equipment in and out.
Okay.
This is a foot wall. So this is 12 inches high, meaning it's, it's 12 inches. It contains the total quantity of both of these were to burst, it would allow you, or it would store the chemical. Same thing with here. This chemical is, this is the largest one. This is five feet or eight feet, six inches tall. So if you were standing next to this and we were to put you in a picture, it would be standing above you. Okay? But if it were to burst and you were to walk out of this room or out of this, excuse me, room, this area, this, this is only 12 inches wall, this, this, this little berm here. This wall, and we should, we should delineate it separately, is a full wall.
All right. So these are just, these are just areas that are set off by a 12 inch high barrier. And then within those areas, you have containers for the chemicals. Is that correct?
That's right. And the 12 inch high, we call it a berm. It's just to contain it in the event that there's a spill.
Okay. All right. And then how do you, how are the chemicals injected into the, if you pull the, injected into the combined well water on the other side of the room?
Oh, and, oh, into the well water. Okay. Oh.
You pointed to an injection site?
Yes.
Along this pipe? So how do the chemicals get over there and how is that controlled and done?
Oh, great question. And also I'll, I'll show you how these are filled. So these bulk chemicals, this can contain 1,150 gallons. And what's great about it is that we designed the site so that when a, a truck drives in, it, it can drive in and it can give you an injection or fill these things by just filling it through the wall. Basically, there's a port. And so that's a nice fill. That's a nice event where it's once a month, maybe once every two months. Well, for hypochlorite, it's once a month for hypo. And, and it just, in 20 minutes or 15 minutes, the, the big bulk tank, 1,150 gallons, and this one 550 gallons, it's full in five or 10 minutes. What you asked is different and what you asked is that how does the, so there's a pipe within a pipe, meaning we have a polyethylene tube off of this day tank. So this day tank contains 100 gallons and it runs overhead, which is not ideal, but it runs overhead about 16 feet. And it's going to, and so you've got a stainless steel hanger. But that, you know, you can imagine a hanger that you would hang a light on, for example, with a PVC, one inch PVC with a half inch tube inside it. And the nice thing about that is that you've got a PVC pipe with a half inch tube inside it. And the PVC pipe, if anything spills, it's going to spill back into a sump and we don't show it here. But there is a sump in here with a spill alarm. And I wish we did show it because here there is, so that's where, right here is their chemical feed line. It runs this way to the injection point. This one's going to run this way to the injection point. It's all overhead, about six, 15 feet above your head. And it does drain back in the event that there's a spill. And it's a pipe within a pipe, a tube, a half inch tube within a one inch tube.
All right. And then is the amount of chemical that's injected, again, just for the information, injected into the water going through the combined, the pipe that combines the water from the two wells? Is it the amounts, the quantities are monitored 24 hours?
They are. So each, and you go ahead, Tom. It sounds like Tom's speaking up.
Yeah. So, so what we have is we have metering pumps, okay? At all of our wells, there's different pumps and we set them with a speed and stroke based off of the flow demand of that well. So these two wells combined will give us about 750 gallons per minute. These chemical feed pumps that we have, we pace them to go with that flow that will dose the chemical at the, the proper levels that we want so that we are not overdosing or underdosing the chemical. And they're injected into the water main with what we call a corporation stop. And it's basically what we would use to do your water service at your house. So there's a valve that's built right into the water main where these two wells are combined. The poly tube that Ryan was talking about goes into this. There's check valves on there to prevent any kind of back pressure and backflow situations. And the chemical is dosed in there off of these metering pumps.
And Tom, you go out every day and record.
By the state.
And, and you go out every, do you go out every day or do you, every other day and record? Or do you have the SCADA tells you how many gallons were injected every day?
Yeah. So, so we do both. So our SCADA system tells us exactly how much we're using as well as going, we have our operator go out to the site on a daily basis. And he records chemicals, he adds chemicals when needed, and he makes sure that the metering pumps are doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing. They're not air bound or any other issues.
And SCADA just means the remote, they're, they're getting a remote reading that tells them how many gallons were issued every day? Or how much, you know, what the levels are.
Great. Okay, great. I just wanted to get a little more clarity on all the questions. That's great.
Yeah.
All right. How about, can we go to Warren, if Bob Wirtschaft, I think you're completed. So Warren Chain, do you have questions or discussion for the folks from Weston and Sampson?
First, let me just say it's been very enlightening. It's way outside of my power alley here in terms of the kinds of questions that were being asked. My, my interest was really just to probe security in general. I assume that there's going to be some sort of a gate, a fence, something such as the general public or people that are looking for a new walking trail aren't just going to wander up to this place.
Not only that, James Pearson, are you on still?
Yes, I'm here. So.
Let's, let's, let, I'm so sorry, Warren. No, James, I'm sorry, Warren. I'm, I'm, my bad. Continue, please. Sorry.
No, that was, that was question number one. But following on with that, I assume that given the infrequency of travel on this access way, not a road, it, it doesn't require any kind of lighting. But it does occur to me that there may well be a benefit or a need to have security lighting around the building and potentially a closed circuit camera as well, such that in the event that there is an issue, that it can be recorded and addressed. And I didn't see anything in the plans that really talk about that, but was interested therefore in whether or not that was something that was needed. Any lighting around that building, I'm sure would be downward facing, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, we call it, what do we call that? Night.
Motion sensor.
No, there's a, there's a refer, reference that I have another client that, that, that calls it night.
Turf design.
Yes, thank you. Who said that? Art.
Arts group.
Thank you, Art. Yeah, thank you, Art. Yeah, you're right. Yes, exactly. And, and, and Warren, you're, you're not wrong. So the wells themselves need to be protected. So they do have a fence. So I think the plans show a fence around each well because we don't want anyone to tamper with the wells. That's a part of the sanitary part. And I think that the building has an intrusion alarm. Is that, is that correct, James? Meaning if someone goes to take a pot shot and try to get in the building and try to vandalize it?
It, yes, it will have an intrusion alarm on there.
Okay.
Would there be security lighting and or a, um, security cameras on the wells and or the building? Or should there be? That's a question.
So most, most of our wellfields do not have cameras. The only one that does right now is the Morton Road Treatment Plant that was just recently built. This site most likely will not have cameras. All of our other wells are protected. There will be a gate out front. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, I believe, or James. I think we were talking about putting a gate out by the access road by Mill Pond, a little further past the TW Negerson pit part of things. So there will be a gate to prevent people. There will be signage saying no trespassing, that we have that. All of our well sites currently in town. And everything, there will be lighting around the building. Everything will be motion censored. Most of our lights are at all of our facilities. And there will be an alarm system that will burn intrusion. But, but cameras are not a normal occurrence at all of our wellfields. So I'm not sure that we'll be installing them here.
And it's dark, dark sky complaint. Dark sky complaint lighting, Tom?
Who was that who was speaking?
Only whether or not there had been any input from the public for or against this plan. I would expect not, but I haven't heard that there was none. So hence my question.
This is Catherine, Warren. I don't think we, we haven't had, I don't think we have any public input, any correspondence or.
Catherine, this is Ally. We have not received any public correspondence yet, but there might be someone on the call right now that would like to speak to this item.
Although, this is Catherine. I think I'd like to go through the board members and then take public comment after the board members finish their comments and questions.
Questions about security have been adequately addressed, so no further comments.
Okay, thank you, Warren. How about Tom Gagan? Would you like to go ahead?
Tom Gagan, yes, I would, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Following up on what Catherine and Bob were talking about relative to the chemicals, I think what you've been describing is a primary containment and a secondary containment for those areas where the chemicals are stored. One of them is a 12 inch wall. Is that the thickness or the height of the wall?
That is the height of the wall. The thickness of the wall is minimum eight inch. So it has to be at least an eight inch, you can use, so, so you can use, and we're not, in this case, we're not using an eight inch CMU block with epoxy. We're actually using concrete forms. So this will be concrete forms that are actually 12 inch forms.
And that's enough for secondary containment?
Correct. So an eight inch form with epoxy contain, or sorry, epoxy lining will suffice, meaning you can do a 12 inch tall, eight inch wide CMU block, which doesn't make sense because you don't, you'd have to do 16, right? Because they're eight inch tall. So, so if you're using CMU block, you're either eight inch tall or 16 inch tall. But the, the eight inch width of the CMU block, if you have epoxy lining, is sufficient. We're actually going wider than that. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
You also mentioned, I believe, that these walls will be coated.
Correct. Epoxy. Yeah, exactly.
And that coating certainly would be to a standard that would not react with any of these chemicals. One of them is particularly corrosive. So that material.
Yeah.
Sorry, yes.
The KOH is.
So we have primary and secondary containment that is sufficient enough for any possible catastrophic failure, which doesn't happen very often. But there's enough containment area wise or volume wise to take care of that.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
I've done them, so I know what the number is. Not for these chemicals, but something called Mobile One Oil. In an aquifer district. My other question is just a general question in terms of some potential traffic issues on Mill Road. Mill Road is heavily trafficked. There are some other issues facing the town on that road, which are in some form of remediation. The narrowing of the road, I don't want to get into that now because that's not your issue. But if you say you're going to put a gate at the intersection of Mill Hill Road and the travelway up to the wells, my suggestion would be, and we've done this also, is to make sure that that gate is offset enough so that a vehicle trying to get access onto that property would be fully on the property and none of it would be out in the roadway waiting to open or close that gate.
Yes. James, are you still here? Okay, great. I'm so glad you're here. Thank you.
Yeah. So, so the gate we're actually proposing to install about a third of the way up. Yeah, yeah. So so the gate, we're actually proposing to install about a third of the way up the road. Uh and the reason for that is that there um, uh I believe Nickerson also uses. Uh, well, I guess only if anyone feels it needs to be shown. But but I mean, yeah, like like I said, it's about a third of the way up the road. And what that, and what we've done is we've put it strategically, a third of the way up the road for reasons that once you get past that one third mark. That's when you start kinda go climbing uphill a little bit. So it gives people the opportunity where if they pull up the road, they can go to the gate. And then they see the gates closed and then there's plenty of space for them to just turn around and and leave.
When you say a third of the way up the road, it you have to turn off of Training Hill Road and go about a hundred feet. It meaning that you could take a tractor trailer off of Training Field Road and you'd still be off of 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 Training Field. Uh sorry, not Training Field, geez, Mill Hill, Mill Hill. Uh you could be off of Mill, you you could take, yeah, you could be, thank you, thank you, James. It sounded like you were on the road, so I was, I was trying to pull up the the plans.
Well, that that's my question as a cautionary note is that uh T W Nickerson uh has truck traffic. I think it's six days a week. And and beside that, there's some constrictions on the road which are being dealt with. That is another issue. Um if you put the gate at least a hundred or a hundred twenty feet off of Mill Hill Road, you will be able to get even a tractor trailer safely off the road and not block the road. Uh if it's a third of the way up, uh what happens between the gate and the traverse back to uh Mill Hill Road? It's just gonna be a gate and you can walk around it or drive around it. I I don't know what the the topography there is rather dicey in places.
Yeah, yeah, it becomes, yeah.
Yeah, so.
The other issue.
Driving around it because like I said, the gate's positioned in the in the place where the the roadway starts to go uphill. So nobody, for practical purposes, people wouldn't be able to drive around it. You you'd have to open it in order to get up the hill.
Um uh Tom, Tom, Tom Barr is gonna show us here. I'm I'm opening it up. Could could everybody um just give me one second. I'm sorry. I I didn't realize that I was uh sharing my screen for a while there. And I'm I'm pulling it up right now. Thank you. Sorry. Uh here they are. Here we go. I'm pulling these plans up and you can take a look and Tom Barr.
Just a footnote, just a footnote, the, I'm sure that the members of the planning board are very helpful, are very happy that you sent us full uh blown drawings. That didn't leave much to the imagination. They are large enough that we could read them. Thank you for that.
Oh.
You're welcome.
Yeah, um Tom, Tom Barr, can can you hear me? Can can you see what I'm seeing?
Yeah, I can see it. Yeah, so.
Okay, what would you like? Could I go, shoot, you wanna go here or?
Show the road, yeah, show the road and then just show about how far up the access road we talked about the other day of putting that gate. Just so that they know where Mill Hill Road is down here. Uh T W Nickerson's pit area where they drive all their trucks in. And then so they can have an idea of how far off. So the tractor trailer will have plenty of room to be up out of the way out of T W Nickerson's traffic area and well off of the Mill Hill Road, so.
What you're saying is this.
And then we were.
So here's T W Nickerson's property right here, yes?
Well, yeah, and then they have the access pin the other side of that, Ryan, so to the left of the the access road. So where where do we put the gate? A little bit further down, coming towards Mill Hill Road?
So it's about a third of the way I'm coming from. To the first curve. So we're right where we come to that first curve in the road. That's right about station three hundred roughly. Um just past station three hundred is about where we're putting the gate. Uh you don't see it on this drawing, but it's on a separate drawing, but it's right there at the beginning of where the road starts to kinda climb.
For the benefit, this is Catherine. Could you hold the drawing still and then sh- uh show the road, the whole road? Hold the drawing still and then take the pointer and show us where the gate's gonna be on the road.
Can I give somebody control here?
Right, you're good. So so basically, if we're looking at Mill Hill Road, you see Mill Hill here. You're gonna go up probably about two thirds. So Ryan, if you take your, just keep following. I'll tell you when to stop. Just keep going down the road, keep going, keep going, keep going. Right about, right about there, right, James? Is that where we talked, right where he is now?
The first curve, the first curve, the road curve.
Right about there.
Go back a little bit.
There, gentlemen.
Right there.
All right, so so that's where the gate will be, correct?
Yeah, so T W Nickerson will be able to access all of their stuff on the other side where they park a lot of their vehicles and stuff. And our tractor trailers will not be anywhere near Mill Hill Road. So there shouldn't be any concerns with the traffic flow.
Well, my concern.
Does that answer your question, Tom?
Uh yes, but it raises my concern.
All right.
My concern is that if you have the gate that far up the road and the elevations, the sloping starts to change. And at some point, it's uh almost eight or nine uh um percent. Uh I'd rather see the gate closer to Mill Hill Road, far enough back to get the largest fifty-three foot or or whatever the tractor trailer would be off the roadway safely. But I think that the weight of that uh vehicle is gonna have to have some momentum to go up that percent slope. Um let me tell you, in the sand and gravel business, uh ten percent slopes blow out rear ends. And maybe it's heavier than what you're gonna be transporting. But I don't see the benefit for having it a third of the way up the road, the gate. Uh and then starting from a dead stop because they have to open the gate and start to go up that incline. I don't know if that's in the best interest of approaching the the well of certainly the building where materials have to be offloaded.
So Tom Barr again, real quick. So what would happen is our operators, like the the Chatham Water and Sewer Operators would be at the site before the tractor trailers got there. We would open everything up for them and then the tractor trailer truck would just be coming off Mill Hill Road and come right up the road. So they wouldn't have to stop and then get uh ahead of steam again or whatever. Cause our operator would already be there ahead of them and get everything opened up and ready for the uh the chemical delivery. So I understand what you're saying, but they wouldn't have to stop at that gate and then try to get moving again. So everything would be open.
And and to be fair, Tom, I had the same concern. I I was used to Connecticut Water where I used to work. We had the gate right up off the road, but we don't wanna peo- we won't, we don't want to block traffic on the road. So, you know, it's it's a, it's a, it's a balance here.
Yeah, and and it's a tricky situation with the T W Nickerson site right there as well. Cause we're trying to avoid causing any kind of uh blockage for them to prevent them from doing their day-to-day operations that they're doing. So that was the reasoning to have the gate up a little bit further, more as a stop any non uh workers from going up that road, so up that access point. So it was more of a safety issue there and just to prevent any trespassers. But T W Nickerson's still gonna be doing their operation. So there should be plenty of room when we get that site laid out. It'll make more sense once you see the the layout per se. But it was to avoid any conflict with T W Ni- Nickerson's operations.
Uh I still have concerns, but before I continue, I see that Art Sprouse's hand is up. I certainly would yield to Art.
Yeah, go ahead, Arthur.
I just, just as a clarification for uh what I'm observing on the plans in here, at least the plans that were submitted to our board. The gate is shown at at station two plus seventy-five, so that's two hundred and seventy-five feet from Mill Hill Road. Um that is at a pretty level area for that first stretch. After you get past the gate, it drops at about a five percent grade to station five. That's the low point. And then after that, it goes up at a ten percent grade. So, yeah, see, that that's at station, so that's two hundred and seventy-five feet from Mill Hill Road. So that's all in a very level area though, and you know, there shouldn't be any issues there. And then as soon as they get through, they go for about another hundred and hundred, two hundred feet downhill to station five. And that is the low point in the whole hill. And then after that, it goes up at a ten percent rate. I just wanna clarify that, clarify that for everybody of where the plans show the gate right now.
And Arthur, this is Catherine. So you're saying that where the gate is shown on the plans is work, a workable location?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay, good. So Tom, does that address your concerns?
It it does. It's, I'd like to see it closer to the road um with enough uh distance to get the vehicle completely off the road. But if Arthur sees that there's enough area there and a level spot, I I assume that that would allow for momentum uh for the vehicle to uh go down the hill and then up the uh ten percent slope. That's just my concern. Uh you don't want one of these vehicles um not stalling out, but getting trapped by, that's a lot of weight. And uh I've seen it happen. So if Art, uh as the engineer thinks that uh it's a safe level area to navigate, I'm satisfied that it's a, it's a safe is- issue.
Great. Did you have more questions or uh concerns, Tom?
I I do not, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Uh so I think we need to go on to uh Roger Griffin.
Yeah, I have just two uh minor questions. Uh under comments, we were gonna talk about parking spaces and we, the applicant was proposing five spaces. And it consider, it doesn't seem to have gotten a lot of activity. The five, we, are we comfortable with five? It seems to be okay.
Uh this is Catherine. I'm comfortable with what they show. Any other comments from other board members about the parking based on what has been described to us as the number of people who would be at the site at any given time? I'm uncomfortable with the number of parking spaces.
I do have, I do have a question I have. As I see under says, uh the, you're gonna go before the zoning board of appeals on March twenty-fourth? It must be a typo, or is it? It's March twenty, no.
Well, let's ask Ally about that.
Yeah, I can answer that. So yes, they did actually um go to the zoning board of appeals on the twenty-fourth. I believe that's the date. Um and I do believe, and applicants can correct me if I'm wrong, that they were approved at the zoning board of appeals uh meeting.
Okay, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, great. Any other questions, Roger? Um.
Nope, that's it.
All right, this is Catherine. I think any questions that I had were answered already. Uh and I do see Art Sprouse, you have your hand raised again. Did you wanna bring up anything?
One more thing that I noticed in my notes when I was looking at this. Uh when I first saw the dry well on the plans, I thought that was associated with the roof runoff. But it appears I was mistaking on that. Uh the dry out, dry well is for a four inch pipe that's coming outside the building. What what is that servicing in the building?
Floor drains. So uh there are floor drains that have to be routed to dry well?
Uh I think you have to check the code on that, but I'm not sure that you're allowed to put floor drains into a dry well. But the.
Uh Leah, if you wanna go ahead and weigh in here, but we did check with the building official and the plumbing department, there is no sanitary. There are no sanitary discharges because this is a zone A area or zone one area. So uh the floor drains themselves are gonna be elevated, meaning they're not floor drains, they're floor sinks. Uh or uh they're gonna have a a one inch curb around them. Uh so they're not traditional floor drains. Uh basically, uh that is, that is the way that this is approached. There's no uh sink or or sanitary discharge that goes out to that dry well.
Oh, okay. Thank you for checking into that. That's uh good homework.
That, that's correct, Leah. Did I, did I mistake anything?
You did not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh this is Catherine. I'm gonna go to public comment. Is there anyone connected to the call from the public who has comments or questions uh for the people from Weston and Sampson? Anyone from the public with comments or questions or for the board for that matter? I'll give you a few seconds in case you're muted. I don't see any hands raised. Let me just double check. Give me one moment. I don't see any hands raised. So what I'd like to propose, what I'm hearing from the board is there is some additional information that we'd like to review. Uh would it be all right with the applicant if we uh we can prepare a summary of what that is and and get it to you? Uh Arthur and Ally and I will prepare the summary and send it to you. You know, as quickly as possible after this meeting. Not tonight, but tomorrow if we can. And then can you come? Uh I'm hearing from the board that we'd actually like to sit and look, review that information. So could you come back? Could we continue the matter to the April eleventh meeting?
Uh yes, I I think that's, yeah. Uh we, Leah, we're we're headed to bid, but do we want a provisional approval or or how would you? Go ahead, Leah. This is your decision.
No, we'll be back on April twelfth. That'd be great.
All right. All right, as long as that's acceptable to the applicant, that's what I'll propose. And did I get the date wrong? Is it April?
Oh, it's April eleventh is a Monday. Yeah, that's a Monday.
Monday.
Vacation, yeah.
All right, so we'll, we'll request the additional information. We'll do that. We'll make a summary and we'll do that in writing. Uh and then we'll continue this matter until the April eleventh meeting. And Ally, is that also acceptable for our schedule?
That's fine. I just wanted to let the applicants know that we do send out the packet on the Wednesday before the meeting. So that's the twenty-third. Um actually, am I getting those dates right? Sorry.
Well, for the April eleventh.
Oh, sorry, the April, the, it will be April sixth um is when we send our packets out. So if you could get it to me by, you know, early next week, that would be great, if that's possible.
Do we have an, and I'm sorry, Ally, did I miss that? Uh April eleventh is our next meeting. Is that correct? Yeah.
You are correct, yeah.
Okay, great. All right, so in that case then, could I have a motion to continue this matter to our April eleventh meeting? Uh where we will be provided the additional information as requested.
Art Sprouse, I'll make that motion.
And could I have a second to that motion?
Tom Gagan, second.
Let's do our roll call vote. Art Sprouse.
Art Sprouse, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Tom Gagan.
Tom Gagan, approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Helfer, and I also approve. Thank you, all of you. Uh we really appreciate the complete presentation. And we also appreciate that you will be providing us with the additional information on April eleventh. So we look forward to seeing you then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to the, our next agenda item, which is a continuation of the public hearing for the definitive subdivision plan review for seventy-nine Forest Beach Road. And is that connected? Do you wanna present for this? You've provided us with some new plans and new information. Thad Eldridge.
Yes, I'm here. This is Thad Eldridge, Southeast. I believe Jamie Norcross was going to introduce the project.
All right, Jamie, are you connected? Would you like to go ahead?
I am, Catherine, if I may. Just wanted to start a number of months of where you're here, so just wanted to give a brief overview. Uh and then was gonna turn it over to Thad for the real detail on the revised plan. Um so as you probably recall, we were here uh just before Thanksgiving. And at that hearing, uh board members had several concerns, uh areas that they, for which they're looking for additional information or clarification. I'd say the main concern was relative to the fact that we were showing frontage off of Bobby's Lane. We weren't showing uh physical access to a proposed house location in terms of driveway running from that frontage. So that was one of the main concerns. There's also some issues slash requests for additional information relative to the drainage structures, drainage on the property, as well as um trees that would be removed as part of the process and any proposed uh new trees that uh the applicant intended to plant as part of the project. Um as part of the revised plans that have been submitted, um the Peralts um in conjunction with Thad did a lot of work on, on trying to address the concerns and provide the additional information that the board members were requesting back in November. Um you'll note that the, uh in addition to the frontage that's being created off of Bobby's Lane, there is a physical driveway that will now be constructed up to the proposed house location. That will be the main access to the property. Um within that area, there's also gonna be the installation of the water line and the electric line for the property. And then space left for the installation of a sewer line in the future. Uh in terms of drainage, uh and Thad can describe this in more detail, proposing some drainage structures north of the proposed house location on the new lot. Uh as well as some drainage structures within the uh proposed driveway off of Bobby's. as well as some drainage structures within the proposed driveway off of Bobby's Lane, as well as some drainage structures installed within Bobby's Lane itself, as well as some new asphalt in that area. There has been, if you might remember from a site visit that we all had, there has been some issues with water as it was in this area from result of several factors. And we think that this will contain the water created by this property and actually, you know, result in an improvement for the neighborhood overall by what the Peralts are intending to do with the drainage facilities, including those within Bobby's Lane. And then finally, within the packet submitted by Thad's office, there is a planting plan that was provided by Phil Chaney, who Mr. and Mrs. Peralt hired for this project. And he is showing on that plan, trees that would be removed or lost as part of the project, as well as some proposed new plantings that are along the eastern lot line of the house at 79 and then along the new drive for the proposed new lot off of Bobby's Lane. So that's just sort of a high level overview of, again, some of the concerns raised at the last meeting in our attempt and hopefully achievement of addressing those issues. So Thad, would you be able to give some more detail?
Sure. One of the let's find, right at Forest Beach Road. So we do have a shared driveway there that's within a panhandle. The easement that exists over Mrs. Daley's property has been reviewed with the land court. It was never defined in width. We presumed one rod wide or 16 and a half feet and the land court has agreed with this that, and is certainly a fair presumption. The original plan scales at about 18 feet, which those plans are all scanned in from microfiche, so they're not, not always accurate. So we have a 14 foot wide shared driveway coming in. That's for Mrs. Daley's existing access where she has three points of access from this. That is also the access for 79. It's their panhandle. And that will be the secondary access to the new house. The stormwater runoff is being collected in a swale. Originally it was a trench and that's left over in one of the plans that will be revised. That swale then leads down to a bio retention basin that has an overflow. Stormwater report has been submitted and it's been designed for the 100 year storm, even though your regulations only require the 25. The house itself has dry wells, four dry wells coming off of it. So it was nice sandy soil. The site plan has been prepared as requested. Behind the house, we have Pierce's path. That's an 18 foot wide, basically a driveway, but it does constitute the road. We had, at Bobby's Lane, we were able to keep that at 7% for the regulations. We didn't try and trigger out the 10% and it's too short of a distance to really get a decent vertical curve to attend. From the seven, it increases in pitch up to a 15%. There are two trench drains being proposed to catch the water that would enter into the 15% zone. Also to catch it that is generated within that 15% zone. There's a relatively flat parking area turnaround at the top. And we have stormwater systems again rated for 100 year storm event. We, these stormwater systems are specifically designed to capture the minimum necessary generated on the site. So while this is bettering the situation, these will not collect enough or dispose and infiltrate enough stormwater runoff to take care of the town's tennis courts in the north or the paved Judy's Lane Injension Way that were paved without the benefit of review by this board. Heading down Bobby's Lane, there's about 150 feet of, of stretch that the Peralts are proposing to approve. Now be stripping out the existing surface, putting down a new subsurface and then putting a stone surface on top. There are room, space available for utilities. It is rather tight down here, but we have depicted two future sewer lines. The water services, underground utilities, and a proposed gas line coming from Forest Beach. For Dr. Bob's comments, just to grant those, we will fix the, or we will add more detail about which system is which. We prefer to have dry wells over the, over the rain gardens that are suggested as their rain gardens don't always work well on slopes and that's pretty much all that's left on the site. We'll correct the note about the swale and trench and the, the tree planting plan. We can speak to that with questions. The applicant would like to have the buffer put in place as soon as possible. With the other letter from Mr. Temple, it's up to the building department to determine the house numbers. This property or the adjacent property or former Donovan property still has no rights over this property. And so we can't expect a two lot subdivision to go in coming from this. We do have an 18 foot wide proposed road. We have the separation necessary, the five foot generally and 10 foot between water and sewer. The comments that he has regarding water mains are irrelevant as we have two services coming in from two different roads. We have the waivers listed. We have a turnaround as part of the driveway. The land court survey has been completed and reviewed by the land court. The preliminary has. We have two trees that are proposed on either side of, of the proposed road. We have the existing utilities. And lot seven, we didn't do a zoning compliance table on that. That's actually the proposed road. Under land court, you have to, you have to specify a lot number if you're going to convey the interest under the road somewhere. So for flexibility in the future, that is being specified now. It likely will remain with lot six, but, but it's in the future, if they were to want to convey it out to another entity, they'll have that opportunity. If there are questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Thad. This is Catherine. I think what I'd like to do for the board and for the public, before we go to questions from the board, is may I read both, I'll just read in their entirety, Dr. Dunkinson's letter as well as Tom Temple's letter. So first from Dr. Dunkinson, we received this memo. I reviewed the stormwater report dated March 9th, 2022 and plans. Most recent, most recent revision date of March 9th, 2022, prepared by East Southeast for the above referenced property and have the following comments. One, based on the soils information provided and provided the stormwater systems are constructed as shown, the system should function as intended. Point two from Dr. Dunkinson, the drainage systems identified on detail sheet, plan sheet six of six, that is system one, should be clearly located identified on the other sheets. Point three, rather than in-ground structures, that is dry wells for roof runoff consideration, consideration should be given to rain gardens as a landscape amenity. I think Thad has responded to that point. Point four, plan sheet five of six should be corrected to note the drainage structure along the driveway as a swale rather than trench as called on the plan to ensure proper construction. And Thad has addressed that. Point five, the tree planting plan calls for the use of non-native Leland Cypress. Recommend this be reevaluated and a native low water, low fertilizer needed species utilized. So that's from Dr. Dunkinson and Tom Temple's is a little longer, so please bear with me. Regarding 79 Forest Beach Road from Tom Temple, on behalf of the department, I have reviewed and the aforementioned subdivision and offer the following comments and our recommendations shown below. While the majority of items listed below may not be typically seen at the preliminary subdivision submission phase, these items will ultimately need to be addressed during the definitive subdivision submission phase and or site plan review, special permit application and or construction as applicable. I thought they should be mentioned, discussed where this could impact future development to adjacent properties to this subdivision. And this is the definitive public hearing. So definitive subdivision plan, point one from Tom Temple, lot number one. 79 Forest Beach Road mailing address should change to reflect the new proposed street name as well as lot number two should also reflect new street name address. A street sign should be shown on subdivision plan, ultimately being erected at the intersection showing the new proposed road name and also labeled on the plan also identifying the proposed right of way layout with on the land plan. Point two, I recommend that a 33 foot right of way layout be maintained for this subdivision, given the number of underground utilities that will ultimately be installed as part of this subdivision, as well as the future sewer line that will need to be installed when sewer is brought to this area. There is a potential for two or more additional lots that could be developed on the Donovan property northeast of this subdivision at the end of this road. I would recommend the following. A, the area depicted on the grading plan as proposed road drainage in this area, which is shown within the proposed right of way layout, be relocated, relocated on lot number one in, in a defined new drainage easement as part of this subdivision. And point one under point A, this will eliminate any utility conflicts in the future when and if the Donovan property is developed and utility improvements need to be extended for future roadway expansion. Point B, under point two, is an 18 foot wide paved roadway be required to provide two-way traffic which should accommodate vehicular traffic to safely pass in opposite direction with appropriate shoulder areas each side of the roadway. This should also provide adequate movement for emergency response vehicle, that is ambulances, et cetera, should they be called to this area. Point three, provide a typical cross section for the roadway showing the location of each of the utilities proposed for the subdivision with the proper horizontal separation required for each. Keeping in mind sewer will also need to be installed within the proposed right of way layout in the future. Point four, labeled mention widths of roadway on plan. Point five, with respect to the developer's request to install and or utilize from two separate deadened lines and potential stagnant water in each, instead of lopping a new eight inch water main in accordance with the water rules and regulations does not meet with the department's approval. Furthermore, a meter pits for the existing lot, house number 79 on Forest Beach Road, will require approximately five plus feet, plus or minus feet from the curb stop for this service. As mentioned during the preliminary plan stage, there is the potential for further development of the property located at the end of the proposed road, which contains approximately 103, 96, 103,096 square feet parcel. I would recommend the following. The developer be responsible for the installation of an eight inch water main servicing the new subdivision to be located within the right of way on the north side of the roadway with a line gate. Not eliminate the shutdown of water service to the existing houses main and potential loss of water should the track of land to the northeast be developed. And one full length of pipe capped for future connection to be located after the required hydrant. B, install two one inch water services to each lot tapped prior to the end line before the hydrant connection. C, three-way gate be installed at the intersection of Forest Beach Road and the proposed road. D, hydrant located at the end of the line for flushing purposes. Six, provide house numbers on existing condition plan for lot six. Seven, waivers sought by the developer should be clearly noted on the plan for all to see. I would suggest that the engineer provide a table with a list of waivers being requested, providing three columns, a place for description and two columns for approved and denied waiver requests clearly shown on the definitive subdivision land plans to reflect the vote made by the planning board prior to the plan being recorded in the Barnstable Registry of Deeds as shown in the example below. And he shows the waiver table, description waiver requested, and then two columns for approved or denied. And then he shows the other potential waivers. So the 33 foot right of way, the proposed tree planting, the 18 foot minimum roadway pavement, the buffer strip, the roundings and the 18 inch burn. So those are the potential waivers that Mr. Temple notes. Point eight, the proposed T turnaround should be paved to provide safe turnaround for emergency response vehicles and or plowing operations being performed by the developer. And A, show proposed snow, snow storage areas for the T roadway in relations to proposed driveway utilities and proposed tree plantings. B, provide or show proposed grading in the T roadway layout area to make sure surface water drainage is directed to proposed, to the proposed catch basin drainage system. Point nine, the proposed subdivision appears to be adjacent to land court parcels. While I understand that the necessary certifications are not required at the preliminary submission phase, the actual survey will need to be performed in accordance with the land court instruction and the definitive plans certified according to same. Point 10, show proposed tree location on plan. Provide tree table of size type for necessary approval from the tree warden. Point 11, show existing utility pole locations and proposed underground utilities with necessary hand hole junction boxes at changes in direction as necessary on plan. Point 12, remove and replace existing gas service, replace with main with service connections to each of the two lots in question, label proposed size of gas main and proposed service size and location of shut offs. Point 13, please label and describe what lot seven is in your zoning compliance table. If this is intended for roadway drainage use and or for frontage for lot six, I do not agree with, he probably means with this approach. So those are the notes from Tom Temple, which were received this afternoon. So as I'm reading this, he is looking, the plans that we're looking at and that the board suggested is that the approach is actually from Bobby's Lane and the frontage is from Bobby's Lane. And that the north driveway that goes off of Forest Beach Road is not the access road for both lots, but it is a driveway going only to one lot and that we are also presuming that the Donovan lots will not be developed. So I just wanted to make those comments and then maybe Ally, I would ask for some, any points from your side before we go to comments from the board.
Hi Catherine.
Hi. I was here. So maybe we could ask Tom to comment. Mr. Temple, would you like to go ahead?
Sure, thank you. As you see from the letter that I just
As you see from the letter that I just sent out, that's really from the previous comments that I had from the preliminary. A lot of the stuff has been changed with respect for the definitive plan. However, some of the comments from the original comments that I had made, like items one, two, and three, some of those still are applicable, I think, to the subdivision regardless of whether they're going to utilize the frontage down below off of Bobby's Lane. The water main, you're essentially having two stagnant dead-end lines that are being tapped off that are going to be feeding these houses instead of looping the water main through and servicing it with a new eight-inch main with services for each of those houses. That provides a nice loop for the water and water movement throughout the throughout the two lots in the, in that area. So that's something that the department would definitely like to see happen. You hate to have dead-end lines, stagnant lines, especially on smaller lines. If it's something that the the planning board votes to approve, then as I mentioned in the water item that the developer would have to put a meter pit in for number 79, five feet off the right-of-way layout in order to service number 79. The other run isn't as long, so it doesn't exceed the over the 100-foot requirement, so that could, would not need a a meter pit if the board was to vote that way. With respect to the land court, I noticed that the plans that we had received, there was no certifications under the land court showing that the plans were, you know, compiled and completed in accordance with their requirements, as well as the land, the actual on-ground survey being completed and certified as well. So that's why that note was left there. With respect, with respect to the gas service, leaving two, you know, bringing two separate services in that right-of-way layout. Should that the other lots that are contiguous to this ever be developed, you'd be taking up critical area that we'd need for sewer main to service there, both the future lots as well as these lots that are here. And by having two gas mains, you're ultimately, you know, going to lose something if we need to bring the water main in and bring a sewer main into this. As you may recall, the original preliminary plan, they had all kinds of drainage proposed within the existing driveway, if you will, as you come in off of, off the main road. And we talked about eliminating that and putting it outside of the right-of-way layout because in the event we needed to use, utilize the existing easement and right-of-way for future development. So some of those things are particularly just from the preliminary plan. Still comments that this department feels strongly on. And with respect to the Bobby's Lane, you've got steep slopes coming down into that drainage area. You've got a very small little turnaround area. It looks like they've put crushed stone for their typical cross-section for that out in the roadway area instead of paving and, you know, that kind of stuff. You, you end up pushing pretty easy when you're doing plow operations, et cetera. So it's something that I'm concerned about ultimately getting into some of the drainage that's proposed there. I can certainly answer any questions if anybody has any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Tom. This is Catherine, so I just want to clarify the last point you made on your letter because I think what we did is the plans were rearranged, so that as I understand it, and Ally, please comment if you need, if they need to be more complete, that the frontage is off of Bobby's Lane and there will be a driveway. They've, they've given us the site of the building and there is a driveway approaching the building from that Bobby's Lane frontage. And the access road, the driveway that is on the north going off of Forest Beach will not be the access road for both lots. That will remain as a driveway, you could say, going just to 79 Forest Beach and it will not have a 33-foot right-of-way. It'll, they are requesting a 20-foot right-of-way, so I'm just going to ask you a short question. How do you feel about those changes?
I'm a little concerned because you're basically creating legal frontage for just that lot and you're not really doing any road improvements for frontage for the lot. It's really fitting it in so they could utilize that, but still access that I offer the existing road. So you still be utilizing the driveway coming to that house, but that's just there for the purpose of getting the lot to be constructed and utilizing that little box as, as a legal frontage. I understand what the, what their intent is. I understand completely what they're trying to do. I don't necessarily agree with it.
All right, thank you. I see that Thad has his hand raised. Did you want to respond?
Yes, to a few things. First off, the Donovan property has no rights in this one. Any future development from this property into the Donovan property would be subject of a new application and the, the Perraults have no intention of enabling the Donovan's to access. Our assessor's map does show it as a road and up until a point back in the 80s, it was created. Actually, no, it was in the 70s it was created. It was expunged in the 80s and the assessor's map never caught up with it. So the proposal here is a panhandle lot from Forest Beach and then a lot with frontage from Bobby's on a, on a new stub of a road.
Yes, and I see Jamie Norcross has his hand raised. Please go on, Jamie.
Yes, thank you, Mrs., uh, thank you Chair. Just to clarify, I mean, we're putting in, or the Perraults be putting in a substantial driveway off of that new road created off of Bobby's Lane. So it's not just the, you know, access for the sake of having access so that we can have frontage down there. They're going to be spending significant money to create that roadway, the turnaround, the drainage structures that are going to go in there. So I think it's unfair to characterize that as, well, we're just creating this sort of paper frontage to that we can get, you know, the buildability piece. I think that was the concern last time, but I think they've gone above and beyond as part of the redevelop, uh, redevelop plans to create that physical access. So I just think that is, is an important point for the board to keep in mind.
Thank you, Jamie. So why don't we go for board comments and questions for Thad or, or I do see Ally's hand is up, so before I go to the board, let's recognize Ally.
Thank you. I just did also want to mention to the board quickly that under our rules and regulations, the board can approve a subdivision that has a T turnaround or an L turnaround instead of our, you know, typical cul-de-sac. So I just, and I, I think that is also in my staff report. I just wanted to point that out to the board.
Yes, thanks, Ally. Yes. That is in your staff report, thank you. And Jamie, your hand is raised, is another comment before I go to the board? Or is it your hand raised from before?
Sorry, I forgot to lower my hand.
All right, all right, so Arthur, would you like to go ahead, please?
Yes, all right, so this approach that has been done has dealt with some issues that our board has previously put forward as concerns to the applicant. And, and I think they've, they've done significant changes to a, address some of those concerns. One was having only the access off of Forest Beach Road for both lots. We, we pushed the issue and the applicant has made the modifications with the access off of, off of Bobby's Lane. So then the other part is we asked them to make the improvements if they were only going to be using it as a drive-off of Forest Beach Road for, for, for 79, that they make improvements to the section of the roadway, which, which they have done. And they've put all of that driveway onto within the, the right-of-way that Thad is, has said that he has confirmed with the Barnstable Land Court. So there's a couple of things that were dealt with which were significant from our standpoint of making sure that these were legitimate from the standpoint of how they were going to be accessed. I had spent time with the applicant to understand and define a little bit better the stormwater, especially the one that is going to be off of Bobby's Lane. I expressed some concerns associated with with the 15% grade to have a sufficient means of capturing that. And, and they've gone about that in a very, I thought, very good way. They pick up a trench drain at the top of the slope, which is fairly flat up to that point. They capture most of the, any runoff that does occur there. And then they put another one at the bottom of, of the grade before it actually goes to the 7% and they both go to an infiltration basins. That's, that's a good way to deal with it, capture most of it first and then do another catch-up on anything that gets passed there. I, I understand all the concerns that Tom has raised. I haven't had a chance to look at them in, in depth because, of course, we just received that tonight, so we need to take a look at it a little bit further. But from the, from the perspective of the primary issues that I, I had as, as a board member, I think most of those have been satisfied. Certainly if there's, when I looked at Bob Dunkinson's, all of his seemed to be in line. Number three, that's a prerogative of the, of the applicant. It can go either way. If they're proposing a dry well, that certainly is a good way to eliminate runoff from the bill, from the house to what would eventually end up in the infiltration system, which again would put a bigger burden on it. So they're capturing it in, in a way that's, it's very satisfactory. They're putting a bio-retention basin in for all of the rest of the roadway. Again, that's a, another positive outcome of what they're doing. So they're doing significant stormwater management work to, to address the concerns I think that the board has raised as best as practicable and that's a word that is used often with the DEP standards, were as much as practicable. And I think they've, they've, they've done that to their best of ability. So I don't have major issues associated with this. Certainly I'm interested in hearing what the other board members have to say, but my major concerns, I think, were addressed and hopefully the rest of the board too. Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur. So let's go to Bob Wertschafter. Bob, are you muted?
Yeah, I have no questions, Catherine.
Okay, thank you. How about Warren Chain?
Now, this is, this is Warren Chain. Just for the record, I would like someone just to reiterate the position of the neighbors on Bobby's, Bobby's Way, Bobby's Lane, Judy's Lane. My understanding is that they are comfortable that what is being proposed here in this plan is going to solve their ongoing issues with pooling of water on Bobby's Lane. But I just wanted someone to confirm that my understanding is correct.
This is Catherine Warren, I believe it's correct. Ally, can you also respond to Warren's question and also Thad has his hand raised?
I think, oh, I'm sorry Catherine.
No, go ahead, Ally, sorry.
I think that Thad might be a better person to answer this question. We haven't received any letters regarding this application recently. And I wonder also if, as this is a public hearing, we might hear a public comment on this application from the public if they are here.
Yes, that's great. So Thad, do you want to go ahead?
I, I've stated it as clearly as possible many times. This is a drainage system designed to collect more stormwater runoff than is being generated, but it is not being generated on the site itself. It is not designed to capture and infiltrate all of the stormwater runoff coming from Judy's Lane and from the tennis court. And there's an overflow pipe so that if another entity wants to go in and augment this drainage system, they can. But the, it would be onerous to have to fix all of the problems that predate this, the development of this property.
Thank you, and I see Jamie Norcross has his hand raised. Go ahead, Jamie.
Sorry, Madam Chair. I just want to inform the board, I know two of the, the closest neighbors at the end of Bobby's, the Fishmans and the Shays are in favor of the project. I believe Mr. Fishman is actually on the call this evening, so perhaps when the time comes for public comment, he'll be able to speak to Mr. Chain's concern.
Great, thank you. Warren, did you have other comments or questions?
No, other than to say I, I'm very impressed with the amount of work and effort that's gone in to try to address the, the concerns of the board as expressed in previous presentations.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. You and your client have done, I think, a tremendous amount of responsive changes to the plan. No other comments.
Thank you, Warren. Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin agrees with Warren. I think that the effort that's been put into this by the applicant really shows their intent to do the best job possible. And I think a round of cheer should go out to And I think a round of cheer should go out to.
Okay, Catherine, I just got back off the phone. We are broadcasting right now. They were able to bring it back up. They just can't converse with us, so.
All right.
They're live currently.
All right, great. And was some of the meeting missed?
They said that the last thing that they had recorded and was live was right when Tom Gagin spoke. Right after that, they, they lost us for a little bit.
So we actually did lose quite a bit of the meeting, I think.
We might, we might have, yes. But at this point, you know, there's really nothing we can do. But we're back up running live currently, so.
Yes, because I think after Tom was Roger, and then I think I spoke, and then we had some further comments from Arthur possibly. But anyway, I think we should just go ahead. So Mr. Fishman, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So as you know, I appeared last year and, you know, my neighbor across the street, the Shays, and myself and my wife, I live at number 34 Bobby's Lane, which is the house adjacent to Bobby's and Judy's Lane diagonally across from the site. And in my testimony last year, I, I was very concerned about the amount of sheeting that comes down from the tennis court, sheeting that comes down from Judy's, Judy's Lane. And it's created a significant nuisance in front of our house and in front of the Shays' house. So, you know, we've always felt that the town should really step up to the plate and recognize the sheeting that comes off of the court. And nothing has really occurred on that. So while we're not thrilled with either the access arrangement or the, 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 the sheeting that will probably continue to happen, recognizing, as we heard from the engineer, that this system will not take all of the, the sheeting that comes from major storms. And in fact, you don't really need major storms. There were several weeks, we understand actually from the applicant who lives down here, that there were several weeks when this part of Bobby's Lane was underwater. Doesn't take too much to bring that kind of condition. So while we're not thrilled about this particular proposal, we have been working very closely with the applicant. And we would like to support the changes to the subdivision plan, which again, just for the record, I referenced in Eldridge's 3922, Revised Definitive Subdivision Submission. And this shows a new roadway extending into Bobby's Lane. We've seen some of the specifications for that, which includes buffer landscaping at the corner, which is, which is very good. A catch basin at the corner of Judy's and Bobby's Lane and reconstruction of the Bobby's Lane surface for a distance of 148.5 feet to a point on the plan that's labeled as a high point. We think that this new surface and the topography change that will result will be a significant improvement. And we think that to some extent, not entirely, because we still feel the town should do its part. But the developer is doing his part to improve on the landscaping at the end of the driveway, which is a mitigation. And we feel a very important part of the mitigation is extension of the road to improve the poor drainage condition that we currently experience and that we feel we would probably experience much more seriously as a result of a new accessway going in.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman.
Thank you.
Yes, any other public comments or questions? Questions for Thad or for Jamie Norcross? Or I'll give you a few seconds in case you're muted. I don't see any other hands raised from the public. So Tom Temple, are you still connected?
I am. I would like, if you could bring up the existing condition map, if you don't mind. If you could pull that up. I, I would like to address Mitch's last comment, where he indicated that, you know, the town needed to step up and, and take care of the sheeting and drainage from the tennis courts. But, you know, when we walked the site, we could see where the erosion was taking place, coming from the existing lots that are there. You can go to the existing condition plan, that would be helpful. You know, you can see where the water comes down in two areas. And here's, you know, where the mouse is right now, where the hand to the left there where the tennis courts are, you can see a swirl that comes down along to that part of the tennis court from that vacant part of the lot, as well as from the other side of the driveway comes down also into the tennis court. So this is, a lot of the drainage is coming down the hill from this, this property to the tennis court, which is a flat area. And it may be sheeting across the tennis court, but a lot of this is coming in. And as you may recall, when we walked the site originally, I had indicated that, you know, some type of drain intercept should be placed in these existing lots to keep further surface water from coming over, landing down into the tennis court area. So that is still one of my concerns. While it looks like they've done a good job with the Lot 6, the, the second lot that's proposed. I think the existing, there's nothing being done to the existing lot to try to take care of any of that surface drainage that's making its way down to the, the town's property. So I just wanted to touch base on Mitch's comment with that. With respect to some of my comments, again, I think that, you know, the water main is a big issue for me. You'd like to see, you'd like to see a case where anytime you can loop the water main through and have people connect it to a system that is, you know, looped and always having water moving instead of being in stagnant pipes. In this case, it would be two separate stagnant dead-end lines that they're servicing to, to houses. That's something like we try to take care of when we're doing new work or we're doing reconstruction work. We have done it to a lot of the sewer projects that we've done, where we've actually been able to loop some of the existing water mains and upgrade them from two-inch to eight-inch mains and add hydrants so we have a better system, you know, for water distribution. So with that, I think the only other things that really stood out for me was like Item 9, which was the land court certification, making sure that they're signing off on that, that it was performed to the standards of land court. The gas main, again, replacing the service, existing service with a gas main and servicing the two houses to try to save some of that real estate for any type of future development, like I indicated. The other, the other thing is the Lot 7, if we could list what that's for, you know, describe it, if it's going to be used for roadway purposes. A note should be put on the plan for that, for that purpose. And the only thing that I, I would add, which it's not included in that list, would be I, I think that we should be looking at the, between the building department and, and Public Works, we should be looking at an erosion control plan to be approved prior to any work taking place out on that site. Because there are steep grades, there's a lot of work that's going to take place and making sure that we contain all the silt and fines and everything associated with that project on site. So those would be my, my comments for the proposed work.
Okay, thank you, Tom. This is Catherine. And I just want to circle back on the, what I see as the main ish, the main issue. The board has gone back and forth a number of times about how to handle this situation, whether to keep, to, to do what you're favoring, as I understand it. And that is to take the driveway on the north, make it a paved road with the full 30-foot right-of-way and make it the access to both lots. Rather than what this proposal is, which is to leave the road on, leave the driveway on the north as a driveway, just for the first lot. And then the second lot has its frontage off of Bobby's Lane and a driveway that goes up to the house as cited on these particular plans. And you did say that you have concerns about this second approach. So I just, and I'm concerned about your concerns. So can you tell us, if we were to go back to the first approach, what would need to be done to the approach where the road for both lots is on the north? What would we need to do and what do we need to consider? And is there anything that can be done to mitigate your concerns about this alternative approach that we've used, where the frontage for the second lot is off of Bobby's Lane?
Well, yeah, your, your frontage off of Bobby's Lane, you know, is, is essentially that. It's just you're creating the legal frontage for that parcel, which they're describing as Lot 7. But the actual construction, the actual access is coming off of, off of the main driveway, which is, you know, is, is going to be servicing that house. You're not going to have the driveway coming into that from Bobby's Lane, as I understand it, correct?
No, they are. They are going to create a driveway. This is the new plan. They're creating a driveway off of that frontage to access the house.
Is that the one with the 15% grade?
Correct. And that's why it's a driveway and not a road.
And.
And if I may.
I guess, I guess my question is, on that 15% grade, where are they going to park during the winter time when they can't get up that 15% grade? Are they going to be parking down in that low point, point where that turner all was supposed to be? Or what are, what are we, what are we looking at for parking?
I think I, I think Thad wanted to comment. Thad, do you want to answer Tom's question?
Sure, if I could start with the nature of Pierce Path, that's providing a T-turnaround at the end of, of Bobby's Lane. So there is a benefit to the neighborhood by having it there. The Peralts are proposing a secondary entrance with a small driveway coming in from the common driveway. In the wintertime, when they can't access on that 15% slope, they would be able to use their alternate access. There's also plenty of flat area there that when a snowplow comes in, they'll be able to put snow at the ends of the, of the turnaround of the driveway.
All right.
Is this something the developer is going to be plowing themselves moving forward for both 79 and the one without the house number yet?
Well, they would have to. And I don't see the town plowing Bobby's Lane. It's a dirt road. And the common driveway would be, that's just a driveway. It's privately plowed.
Okay.
So hearing that, Tom, do you think your concerns about this alternate approach are adequately addressed? Or would you still prefer that, let's say, Approach 1 is used? That we go back to that and we consider paving the road on, the driveway on the north? And, you know, making that the full access for both lots?
Yeah, well, I, I think that's a decision that the, that the planning board needs to make. It's not my call. I think that the, I think everybody has hit it on the head. I think the engineer and, and the developer have jumped through hoops to rearrange this the way that was acceptable to everybody that walked the site that day. I'm only bringing up things that were in my original preliminary comments, some of the things that are still concerns from the department side, like the water looping, like the other things that you'd, you'd like to see happen. With respect to the subdivision thing, I think, you know, anytime that you could, you know, build some type of roadway network that's able to be plowed and maintained by the town for services for these people that are building and spending a lot of money for these houses and that would ultimately be plowed, I think that's the way that we should be looking at it for public safety. Because, you know, if something happens, God forbid for one of those, yeah, you might have access to get through that back way. But, you know, a lot of people, when it comes summertime, they'll be using the main entrance off of that main road probably a lot more than the, the backside. So you're trying to look for quick response for emergency vehicles that are, that might be responding to an emergency. So you always like to know that there's a roadway access and a roadway layout that it's, it's there and they, they have easy response. I guess that's my, my thing. And I'm not trying, I'm not trying to cut this off. And I'm not trying to be, you know, I, I know there was a lot of work done and I appreciate the amount of work that was done by the engineers and everybody associated with it. I, I'm just looking to make sure that on the town side of it, that, you know, we're being consistent, that's all.
Right, all right. So and from that perspective, safety and plowing and having the paved road on the north is preferable, is what you're saying? Because, for plowing and for safety reasons, going that route? I, I just want to be clear, because I am concerned about your concerns. So I do see that Thad has his hand raised again. Did you want to comment?
Yes, so the paved road to the north option was dismissed by town staff because we had to utilize easements and not a formal road layout.
Right.
So we were ready to move forward with that. And town staff halted the process and said, what if we come in from below?
Right.
Right. Ally, did you want to comment on that or Tom?
So I did what, just want to comment. As I said before, it is in our rules and regs to allow specifically for steep topography, which is what this is, an alternate, an alternate to a cul-de-sac. And that's what the applicant has proposed. And it is something that's allowed under our rules and regs. So I just did want to mention that one more time.
All right. And the, and Arthur, you had your hand raised also?
Yes, I just, I just want to go back to how we ended up here. Because the board members were toggling back and forth associated with this. We had a major concern and why we ended up with what we had. We had a major concern about having a panhandle lot off of a panhandle lot. That is the way we were observing the initial approach associated with this. And we thought for, for sure that that would create precedent that we didn't want it to go down. Therefore, we, we did spend time with the applicant in, in saying, if you're going to come up with a way for these lots to be accessed without coming up with that whole issue of a panhandle within a panhandle, you have to have your access for Lot 6 off of Bobby's Lane. And then the access for 79 Forest Beach Road could be, could be looked at as a driveway access, like a panhandle lot off of a major road. So that got us outside of the issue of what we thought was going to be a major concern for us from the precedent. And once we went then in that direction, we took a look at how do we adjust all the elements to get to where we are here in this, which called for putting the driveway access for 79 Forest Beach Road all within the limits of, of that 33 feet, which it wasn't before. putting the driveway access for seventy-nine Forest Beach Road all within the limits of, of that thirty-three feet, which it wasn't uh before. Um, so that has been corrected. And to have a sufficient access off of Bobby's Lane with sufficient drainage uh as best as practical, which again is, is, is how we done it. So this is essentially two access points. But as um Ally has stated, there is uh often where you have a secondary driveway access, and this is driveway. Both of these are driveways and not um uh roadways. Um, but Lot Seven, just as a clarification, because I'm looking at the plan, because I was wondering that myself. And that is referred to as Pierce Path, and it's referred to as a private way. So that, I'm assuming is going to be part of this subdivision as a way for, that provides for that access to, from a, from a uh, off of Bobby's Lane. So I, I think this is, I was just sort of re- catching up where we, how we went through this, because we were, we were so concerned about that issue there that we said y- you're going to have to do a whole heck of a lot more work if you're going to have everything come off of Forest Beach Road. And I think the outcome of that is, is we didn't feel that that was the right way to go. And I, it's, the, it's, it was a trade-off in here, and we felt that this was a better trade-off associated with that. And so um, I think, I think that's the way the board advanced this. I, I think we, I personally still would like to continue that way right here. I understand that you can do it another way, but I'm not quite sure that that's going to help us to the degree that we were trying to resolve some of our own uh precedent issues. Thank you, Catherine.
Okay, thank you, Arthur. Um. Mr. Fishman, I see your hand still raised. Is it just raised from before? Or did you have a comment? Any other comments from the board?
No, I didn't. Sorry.
Okay. If there's no other comments from the board, this is a public hearing. Um, and we could, uh, at this point, we could vote to close the public hearing if we feel we have the information we need to make a decision and enter formal deliberations and then go to vote. Um, alternatively, we could continue to discuss or continue the public hearing. Um, once we close the public hearing, I'll just remind everyone that then there is no further participation from the public. The board would just enter formal deliberations and vote. So um, I'm getting the sense from the board that we are ready to close the public hearing and vote on this matter. So if that is the case, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Tom Gagan, motion to close the public hearing?
Can I have a second to that motion?
Warren Chain, I second.
Uh, so let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Uh, Tom Gagan?
Tom Gagan, approve.
Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve that we close the public hearing. This means that there's no further participation from the public. The board is in formal deliberation and vote. So uh are there any more discussion than deliberation from the board? Or do we want to go ahead and approve the plans as submitted for this subdivision um plan?
Tom Gagan?
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
I'd like to uh support what Arthur has said. I think the applicant has gone pretty close to the nth degree uh to um, want to eliminate our issue with setting precedents for double hammerhead lots. And also the engineering has at best improved an area which needs additional approval, but is not in the control of the applicant. So um, I would be very supportive of um voting for this, only in that I don't think there's many more alternatives that make any sense, both economically uh or for major issues for the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Art Spru?
Um, yes, um, one of the things that Tom Temple brought up that I didn't see in, in the conditions, which we may want to add, uh, because of the adjustments that have occurred in the plans, I think, I think is uh a suggestion to deal with uh some soil erosion control measures. If the, uh, we can put that in as a condition that the um, the applicant's engineer, uh, when they uh submit these plans for a file, that they uh provide some soil erosion control measures associated with both, both ends of this, just to provide um the mitigation that uh probably needs to have some attention associated with this. I don't think there's, have to be too onerous, but that was, that did, did make a lot of sense uh associated with that, especially since if we're going to put these stormwater uh systems in, it would be good that they are protected until after the uh, the uh ho- oh, housing lots are actually completed. So I would suggest we add that as a condition. I note that there is a condition in there that says coordinate municipal water with DPW. So therefore, that one has to be resolved, but we're, we're saving that, that you resolve it with the DPW and see what uh the final outcome of that would be. Uh, but I would, I'd be okay with the rest of the conditions as they're listed here.
Okay, great. And I'm just also, um, there are some waivers that are requested, and Mr. Temple did request that that it be clearly shown on the plans what waivers are requested and, and that the board has approved them. And Ally's notes say that we're really, we're waiving the roundings and the buffer strips. Um, we are, and we're not, um, let me just see. So and I think the other conditions, the other waivers are mitigated by the fact that we're not calling the north entrance a road. It's still a driveway. So it's just the roundings and the buffer strips. Am I correct in that?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Tom.
Uh, I think there was another issue that was brought up by Dr. Bob, and that was the vegetation, uh, the planting of the trees be of a species that was uh um more applicable in terms of watering and fertilizer. So perhaps that should be a, a condition um for the applicant also.
All right. So the erosion, so we're adding conditions, we're adding the erosion control plan. We're adding that the, instead of Leland Cypress, that in, uh, as Dr. Bob has requested that an alternative native species be selected. Is that correct? So those are two conditions that we're adding. Any other conditions we need to add? That Ally has not included. She really gave us a very complete list. And then I just want to be sure that we're clear on the waivers that are being requested. And Ally, do, should we vote separately on the waivers, or can we? That the board approves each waiver? We need to do separate votes on those?
I think you could put them together and make one vote. I just also did want to point out that for the T-turnaround area, that doesn't need to be a waiver, obviously, because it's allowed under rules and regs. Um, but I just had a quick question on the erosion control plan uh condition. Did you want that submitted um with the building permit application that would be submitted? I, I just want to make sure I have that correct when we write the condition for that.
Um, well, that's usually part of the plan that gets submitted with the, with the subdivision. So I would say that if that, that came with us, because it's mostly the, you know, just the, the uh roads and the drives and the stormwater, so I would say it's more related to that.
Okay.
Uh, a- a- again, I, I think there's a, a, a lot of the upper flat area there is all going into basins anyway, so the upper area isn't as much as a concern as each of the access points. Uh, we'd need to have some uh erosion control measures.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other requests from board members to include additional conditions? Thank you, Arthur. So why don't we, uh, we do want to add the condition that the waivers are clearly indicated on the plan, that the waiver is granted. Um, maybe we can take the board vote on the waivers first, uh, and then we can take the vote on the overall um approval of the plan with conditions as stated. And Ally is noting that we are allowing two waivers. Uh, we're waiving the roundings. There's insufficient room for roundings. Um, speeds expected are minimal. There's, we're understanding there's no need for the roundings. And we're also waiving the buffer strips. There's insufficient room for buffer strips. So if the board uh would approve those two waivers, may I have an, a, a motion to approve those two waivers requested?
Art Spru, I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Roger Griffin, I second.
All right. So we're voting now just on the waivers. Uh, so Art Spru, do you approve?
Art Spru, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
Tom Gagan?
Tom Gagan, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter, approve.
This is Catherine Halpern. I also approve the two waivers requested. And now um we can vote uh on, I will suggest that we vote to approve the plans as submitted with the conditions as stated uh by Ally in the staff report with the conditions that we've added regarding the erosion control plan and the substitution of native species for the latest, for the Leland Cypress. Those are the two conditions we've added. Uh, and may I have a motion to approve the plan uh as submitted with conditions as stated?
Bob Wertschafter, uh, I move that we accept the plan with the uh conditions.
Thank you. Could I have a second? To that motion?
This is Warren Chain. I second.
So let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Uh, Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagan?
Tom Gagan, approve.
Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve uh the plans as submitted with conditions as stated. Thank you very much, Thad and Jamie.
Thank you.
And the Perraults, who I don't think, yes, I see. The Perraults are connected. Uh, and we are finished with that matter, and we can go on to the next items on our agenda. And these are a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. And the first item is a driveway in the Conservancy District, expansion of an existing driveway for forty-eight Strong Island Road. And Thad, are you also presenting for this?
Thad, I am. Thad, I'll give you something.
Please go ahead.
Um, did everybody receive a copy of the proposed plan? Oh, that's the one. So the existing driveway is a little bit narrower and a little bit longer, and the proposal is to shorten the driveway slightly and to widen it so that two vehicles can fit within it. They have issues with having a vehicle in the garage and a vehicle in the parking area and getting that vehicle out of the garage and turning around. The proposal is to make this all pervious. There's a little bit of a stone wall that's needed at the edge of it. They're doing plenty of landscaping out here that we shouldn't need a, a bumper or, or a guardrail. The stormwater is being directed into the low point on the lot. And if there are questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. Thad, this is Catherine. So I just want to clarify that basically the driveway is just being expanded a little bit to the southwest, just that little, sort of almost a triangular area. Do you have any idea how much square footage that is?
Right.
Of expansion?
Calculate that. I can't tell you. It's, it's under twenty cubic yards of material would be needed for it.
All right, yes, because it is noted, the overall lot coverage expansion, but just the, uh, the board is really just considering the driveway expansion. And then also the railroad tie steps are being replaced with granite steps. So does the board have any questions for Thad about this matter? Arthur?
Uh, yes. Um, okay. So, uh, Ally, you have the plan up here, right?
Yep, that's correct.
Oh, okay. Can you follow where it shows, just for the board's purposes and for me, um, where they're calling for the, the coastal bank, which is the buffer elevation eleven, and you can follow that all the way through to the, to the property in, in the rear there? Yeah, that's it. So, yeah, go up, up, yeah, yeah, see. So it encompasses the whole driveway as she's showing there and go straight across. Yeah. That's right. Keep going. Yep. And then it loops around like that, and then it goes to the front. Everything to the left of that is in the flood zone. So that's what we have been running into um, uh, board members in other, in other areas where there, when you're in the flood zone, um, we have been pretty persistent about not allowing fill. Uh, I understand what the applicant wants to do, but he's filling in a neighborhood of two feet in here, and the neighborhood, I gather, at about three hundred and fifty square feet. So um, change the grades, don't fill. And, uh, you know, I would say that we, we can support this to, to the uh ZBA. Um, I mean, I, I think our regulations call for no fill in the flood zone. So
Yes.
Uh, this is what we've been running into several times now. So to be consistent, that's what we should be asking for.
And the regulations allow maintenance and elevating of driveways.
Not in the flood zone.
Not in flood zones.
Yeah, not in the flood zone. This is Catherine, and Arthur is reiterating. Um, all right, other comments?
Yeah, if you had the other driveway on the other side there, which comes off of uh um, what, what road is that? That's, that's off of Stone Island Road. You can make a modification there. There's no issues. Um, but this, and that's why I asked Ally to run the line there. Everything to the left of that is in the flood zone. That's elevation AE le- uh, elevation eleven. So to be consistent to what we've been doing for everyone else who's filed on this, we've asked them to put uh this back to existing, to, to, to the existing grade. You can expand the driveway to that. We'd like to keep it minimized. You are reducing some of the area. But as long as you don't do any filling, I think it would be okay. So I don't think we could make a recommendation to fill the two feet that you're asking for here.
Correct. Thank you, Arthur. Um, other comments from the board or questions for Thad?
I, I have to disagree with that. I, the, the, the bylaw says no new expansion, and the only exception is if there is no access driveway there al- already. And there, not only is there already a driveway there, there is another, is that not another driveway coming off of Strong Road or, or Strong Island Road? Is that a driveway?
Yes.
It was certainly a poorly designed site where they have a drive under garage coming from Fox Hill Road, and they have a front door off of Strong Island Road.
And they have, so they have access to their property, and as far as the bylaw is concerned, there is no additional driveway uh building allowed in the conservation zone. I strongly object to this plan, uh, because we went to all the trouble of passing this bylaw and, and we got, we are not supposed to be consistently allowing these little uh adjustments in the, in the coastal uh areas. Um, I'm sorry, I have to uh admonish the rest of the planning board if you're going to continue to do that. That's not why we passed that bylaw. This has a perfectly good access point that is not in the conservation zone, that can expand that as, as Art suggested, and we, that's what we should be approving.
Yes, and the bylaw, this is Kathryn, does specify that where there is no alternative means of access, that that's the only thing that we can consider when considering a driveway at all in the conservation zone. And this clearly does have an alternative means of access. So, thank you, Bob. Warren?
Yeah, this is Warren Chain. I've been out to the site, and it's very clearly the case that the garage is only accessed from Fox Hill Road. And so that is the primary means of entrance and exit from the property. It's where clearly they would like to be able to get out of the garage, and at the same time, not have to be moving cars around in order to be able to do that, to get out of your garage and back around and head out. I can, I would argue that there really is no alternative access. There is a driveway, correct, off of Strong Island Road, but it is access to the front door. Yes, you can have a visitor come up and park in a modest turnaround area, but as a practical matter, this is a house that is functioning via Fox Hill Road. And I don't look at the driveway off of Strong Island Road as perfectly acceptable driveway, therefore, we should disregard any consideration that the Fox Hill Road driveway be considered no alternative means of access to the site. I, in other words, I guess I'm convincing myself this isn't really an exception to our bylaw. It does seem to me everything in this proposal makes sense, especially taking out all of the Creosote loaded railroad ties that will disappear from the flood zone, which has to be, you know, a very significant plus to this proposal. So anyway, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Other comments from board members? Tom or Roger?
If I may, answer your first question, Madam Chair.
Yes, please go ahead.
It's an increase of about 240 square feet of surface, and it's a decrease of about 40 square feet for a net of 200.
All right, for the driveway increase alone?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Thad or comments from the board? So, we should vote on this? We may not all agree about this. So, I'm going to propose that the motion be made that we send a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals, and if you disagree with that, then you vote nay, you vote no. We may have some disagreement in our, we may not have a unanimous vote in this case. And in those cases, it's generally, what we do is we make the motion in the positive, and if you disagree with that, then you vote no. Warren, you have your hand raised?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I would appreciate it if Thad could comment about the possibility of altering the grade of the driveway such that there did not need to be fill added to it. The increase in size is one thing, but adding fill in a flood zone is a totally different matter, and I think I have a different feeling about that. But I haven't heard whether it's totally infeasible to maintain the grade.
It would be a substantial cut in that location. I mean, we have a garage that's set at an elevation, and we have a street that's set at an elevation, so the turnaround would drop by two feet, we would have to cut the rest of the driveway down to match it, and you'd have a fairly steep slope, and that would direct stormwater towards the neighboring property rather than into the low point on the subject property.
So, Thad, this is Kathryn, so you're saying the proposed plan, we cannot alter it to omit the fill?
I mean, the best we could do is drop it a little, minimizing fill.
Yes, so, I'm going to make a comment that our bylaw is very specific, that we cannot use fill in the flood zone, and also, it's very specific that, that we can consider the construction and maintenance of a driveway, and I'm actually reading the bylaw, or roadway of minimum legal and practical width where no alternative means of access from an established way is available. And although I very much appreciate Warren's comment that the garage can't be accessed by the other road off of Strong Island Road, it is very clear that this is not a case where there is no other means, no alternative means of access. There is an alternative means of access that is not in the Conservation District. So, I just wanted to make those points if we're evaluating our bylaw, you know, strictly speaking, so.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I would also, I would also point out that having the, there's nowhere in that provision that says, well, you, so you can be able to park a second car and not have to move it to get the other car out. I mean, those are just conveniences that unfortunately, because this is in the conservation zone, and we are going to see increasing issues with just keeping that property there, I do not understand why the rest of the board is willing to let us go against a bylaw that was passed so recently.
Yeah, okay. All right, so.
Good chair.
Yes, is that, who is that, is that Tom? Yes.
I'd like to support what Bob has to say, in that we're in a situation where we have a conflict in this board, if it votes to approve this, is establishing a precedence which we never can walk away from. And I think we need to be consistent with what the bylaw and what the laws of the town are in terms of the flood plan. So, I would just agree that we're setting ourselves up for failure if we approve.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, thank you, Tom. Arthur, did you have a comment?
Yeah, don't misinterpret my statements. I'm not supporting this approach. I'm definitely against the fill, only because that's the consistent thing we've done with multiple other sites, and with this would be a reversal of that, and I don't see that happening in my opinion for this site either.
Yeah, so again, I'm just, this is Kathryn, I'm agreeing with Bob and Tom and Arthur on two counts. This isn't meeting the requirements of the bylaw because it is using fill, and secondly, there is an alternative means of access. So, so I'm going to suggest that we make a negative recommendation to the zoning board of appeals, and if someone would like to make a motion, that we make a negative recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. Please make that motion.
Kathryn?
Yes.
Art, I just want to clarify, we make a positive recommendation and then we voted to?
No, yes, okay.
Is that right?
That is the more formal way of doing it, that we, the motion is made in the positive, and then if all of us vote nay, then it means the board unanimously disapproves.
I just want to make sure the process goes, that's all.
Yeah, we can do it that way. We can do it that way. So, so if someone wants to make the motion that we recommend this to the planning board of, to the zoning board of appeals, I'm sorry, and then if we do not recommend, then we would vote no.
Art Spru, I'll make that motion.
All right, and may I have a second?
Roger Griffin, I'll second that.
All right, so let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, no.
Bob Worchafter?
Bob Worchafter, no.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, no.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, no.
And Warren Chain?
This is Warren Chain, I'm very reluctant, but I have to agree and say no.
Thank you, Warren, and this is Kathryn, I also vote no. So, we're sending a unanimous no vote as a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. Thank you very much. Then we also have a recommendation that we need to send, well, we're not ready, this is for 100, this is for 160 Mill Hill Road. The zoning board of appeals has requested our comments.
Kathryn?
Yes.
I can chime in just very quickly.
Please chime in.
So we did put this on the agenda because the zoning board of appeals did ask for our recommendation, but the zoning board of appeals has already approved the application, so it would be my recommendation to, when the planning board does make a determination on the application, we would send it to them, the zoning board of appeals, for inclusion in their file. But I don't think, since their hearing is already closed, we don't need to send a recommendation to them.
Yes, okay, good, so we'll do that next meeting when the additional information is brought before us. So, thank you, Ally, thanks very much. So the last item on our agenda is, under chairman's comments, we did want to discuss considering in-person planning board meetings versus continuing with our remote participation only meetings. So, I'll just open it up for discussion from the board. We do have the option to go to, to go to in-person meetings. Art Spru?
I guess what I asked from Ally and others is, are the other boards starting to do in-person meetings, and is that something that we should consider in our board? I mean, we, we supported it for a brief period of time there last year, and, you know, we halted because of other concerns, but I'm just interested in if other boards are doing this, is there a reason why we shouldn't also go to full in-person? And does that mean it is just in-person for everyone, including the public, or can it be hybrid? If you give me a little bit of background on that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, if you want me to just discuss it, I can briefly give a little overview. So, there are different approaches that the board, different boards and committees in town are taking. Some, like the zoning board of appeals, and I know that obviously the select board, they are meeting in person, but all, even if you are meeting in person, we're still doing this hybrid version. I think this will be with us forever personally. So we would allow applicants and members of the public to still attend via Teams, kind of like we've done in the past when we met in person for that brief period of time. And, you know, obviously, the board members, some of them could still be virtual if they'd like, some could be in person. It really depends on, you know, the comfort level, I guess, of the individual. I do believe that the governor has extended the timetable when, you know, we can still be continuously virtual, that open meeting law requirement, so I think we're so good if we wanted to continue that. But like I said, it really depends, I know the Conservation Commission is still virtual, HBDC is still virtual, but like I said, the select board is in person, zoning board of appeals is in person, and I believe the Historical Commission is in person as well. So, I really think it just depends on the comfort level of the board or committee.
And this is Kathryn, and I just wanted to clarify, as I understand it, however, if we do go to in-person meetings, we can't restrict that, that the planning board would be in person, but also applicants and the public, if they wish to attend in person, would be allowed to attend in person. And there would be, as I understand it, Ally, correct me if I'm wrong, that we're not really, we wouldn't be having social distancing requirements or mask requirements, so the public and applicants could attend in the meeting room with us, and there would be no other requirements. Is that correct, Ally?
That is correct, so we would follow whatever guidelines are in place at the time, and, you know, right now, obviously, the Board of Health voted to lift the mask mandate for meetings, and also in-town buildings and in-town, so we do not have a mask mandate currently. But, you know, of course, that could change depending on the nature of, you know, what happens. But right now, that is true.
Okay. All right, so any other questions or discussions? So if we go to in-person, it means that the hybrid would still be allowed, but also that the in-person aspect of it would be open to the public and to applicants as well?
That is correct, yes, we couldn't, you know, everyone would be welcome, we couldn't say just board members.
Okay. Art Spru?
Yes, well, just to start this off, since I asked to put this on the agenda, I'm open to have an in-person meeting. I'm just more comfortable with it. I still feel comfortable that with the situation that we're in, is we're going to be okay if there was going to be an issue, as Ally said, the Board of Health will do something to throw a flag up, we can always, as individuals, we can go back to our own hybrid. So, I'm supportive of that, however, if a majority of the board says no to this, then I will continue to do the, you know, the Microsoft Teams meeting. I mean, I'll participate however the board decides, though. But I'm okay with trying this, though.
All right, any other comments? Yes, please, Tom.
Tom Gagin, I'd like to ask a question of Ally, if I may?
Oh, sure.
Ally, do you know if it's legal for us as board members to ask which of the board members has been vaccinated, or is that just too personal?
Yeah.
A level, a level of comfort would be that we would all be able to say that we're fully vaccinated, meeting in person, but I don't know if that's legal to ask.
Yeah, I would, I don't know for sure if it's illegal to ask, but I would, you know, I think shy away from asking members or, you know, others.
And certainly, we couldn't ask members of the public or applicants. We just, I think we do need to accept it, that if we go to in-person, you know, it's open to the public, and we wouldn't be, you know, screening in that way. Roger has a hand raised?
I, I guess I would suggest that, you know, there is a little bit of an uptick out there, and it could be nothing, but if you start reading, it could be a little, I guess if it was me, I guess I'd probably think that, let's get through April vacation, that's usually when it happens, I mean, let's see how things go, and if, end of April, where we are, it could be a whole different story, I would probably give it one more month. I think we should, hopefully, we'll be ready, that that be, in my opinion, or whatever we want to do, I'm fine, but that's what I would suggest.
So wait another month and then reconsider? Yeah, we could have thought it that way.
April vacation, because that's what a lot of companies are looking at anyway, even toward Disney World, you know, we're going to lift the restrictions after that, because it's just, if we're going to have a problem, we're going to have, that's when we'll have a problem. And if we get through that, we should be fine, hopefully. That's what I would suggest, but I'll go along with whatever we want to do.
Warren has his hand raised.
Yes, Madam Chairman, this is Warren. I agree with Roger, I think there's certainly a scenario that you can look at over the next month where, after spring break and so on, and new variants and so on, that we may well, we may well see an uptick, but if we don't by the end of April, I would say that we ought to go to him, face-to-face meeting, especially if there's a hybrid option, you know, you probably all know I smack my hip, so I'm not guaranteed that I can get to face-to-face meetings, but if I can, I'd much prefer it, but if there's an option to have a hybrid, and if I can't get there, then I can still be at the meeting. I think that, you know, that's a very good option that gives every board member the personal decision as to whether to be a face-to-face or virtual. And as long as that option's there, I think it's a no-brainer, but I think it would, it might be prudent to wait an extra month.
All right, Arthur, you have your hand up.
Yeah, as I mentioned to you and Ally when the meeting started, I won't even be here for the month of April anyway, so the only attendance I'm going to have in April is by virtual. So, I support Roger's suggestion, it's a good one, works into my plan.
Good, so if everyone agrees, why don't we, I don't know that we even need to take a formal vote, if all board members agree that, we'll watch it for the month of April, and then we'll bring up the topic again at the end of April. How's that? If everyone's agreed. If everyone's agreed, why don't we go with that plan? All right, sounds good. So if there's no other comments from the board and no other comments from the public, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move to adjourn.
Not everybody at once.
Acclamation.
Bob Wurchafter, why don't you make the motion?
I move that we adjourn.
And may I have a second?
Roger Griffin, I'll second that.
All right. Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Kathryn. I also approve that we adjourn the meeting. And let's note the time as 8:06 PM. And thank you, everyone, for your participation. And we will see you next time. Enjoy the rest of the evening.